Then I will call to order the council meeting on June 28th at 7:30. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please.
Alder Allen?
Present.
Alder Radifrada?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Herbst?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a farm, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, let's see, next is public preferences. And first we've got an, uh, mayoral appointment. I believe Nate is online. And this is for Housing Advisory Committee. Nate, if you could just tell us, you know, just a little bit about yourself and your interests. And, uh, we'll see if there's any questions after that. That would be great. Go ahead.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for my lateness on that. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome news. Well, my name is Nate Farmer Eden. I work for ACC Property Management Group. Been there for going on just about eight years now. Um, background is in social work with a master's degree. My current role is community coordinator. Long story short, when I initially took the role on, we were able to develop kind of like a needs analysis slash assessment, working with all of our residents in developing after-school programming, nutrition classes, financial education, and credit repair courses, a plethora of different things. That has since transitioned over to Maple Lawn Apartments. And since grown into being able to work with, uh, the Housing, uh, Initiative Committee that was on, and I served there as the vice chair, um, with Wade, who has since left. Um, but it would be an honor of leverage to be able to take part in another committee. Um, and so I just want to say thank you all very much for the opportunity to be able to speak and, and have an answer to any questions.
All right, any questions at all for Nate?
I have a comment.
Yeah, Julia.
So, um, I used to work, uh, with Nate in the, um, Healthy Neighborhood Committee. So welcome back. He's great. So happy that you're back, okay?
Thank you so much.
I don't see any other things. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion? All right, moved by Jay, signed by Joe, all in favor of approving Nate. Say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, eyes have it unanimous. Thank you very much, Nate.
Truly appreciate it, everybody. Thank you so much. Looking forward to working with you all.
All right, have a good night.
You too, thanks.
All right, next up is public hearing on the mayor's proposed CIP. And so I can open the public hearing. I do not have anyone, uh, that I have. Is there anyone online? Scott? All right, seeing no one here for that, I will close the public hearing. And we do have two individuals who'd like to speak on the agenda items as well. Uh, Diane, you gonna go first, maybe, or Jay? It's, I don't care. Whoever wants to go first can go first.
Are there lights? Oh, yeah, there is.
Yeah, there you go.
Hello, Council. My name is Jake Johnson, 2617 Targi Street here in Fitchburg. Um, I'm here tonight representing the Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates. Um, I apologize for not being here for your last meeting. I take it personal responsibility for the fact that you didn't understand, or that some of you didn't understand the, um, ask for the drinking fountain. So that's why I'm here tonight, is to give a little more context to that in hopes that it could be reconsidered or even possibly put in the CIP. Um, so, um, just a little context, about six years ago, when Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates partnered with the city for this park, we came up with a spreadsheet of kind of who was going to contribute money for what and who was going to pay for what. And the well, um, at that time was going to be a hand pump well. And we had a $3,000 line item in our budget, in the Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates budget, to pay for the hand pump well. And since then, long story short, um, the well needed to be tested. So they needed to bring in a pump, pump it out, um, an electric pump. And then water tested okay. Um, and it's kind of been on the back burner of park staff for a while because it's a difficult process putting in a well, and it's expensive. Um, so then, um, we were instructed by staff to consider putting in an electric well. So that would be, uh, lower maintenance for the city. It's higher cost initially, but the thought of a hand pump maybe not being the best, um, suggestion for the long term. So anyway, long story short, city suggested going the electric pump route, uh, which bumped the budget up past what we had agreed to pay. Um, and then the Dog Park Advocates talked, and we said, well, we'd go with that if that's what you think is the best, and we're willing to kick in some extra. So over and above our 3,000 amount, I believe it was 8,000. I know Diane has better numbers. But that's where that was at. And I had mistakenly thought, oh, it's a simple thing because we're paying for it, it'll, it'll go through the council, no problem. And I, uh, I apologize for not being here for that. So, um, I'd, I'd say maybe, uh, let Diane talk before questions, and then you can ask either of us, is that-
Yeah, we can actually have discussion because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm Diane Streck, um, 3099 Barrington Hills Court in Fitchburg. I'm also a member of the Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates, a group whose mission was to establish a dog park in Fitchburg. Um, during the last council meeting, you discussed a resolution to amend the parks budget to use funds to help pay for a drinking fountain at Sunnyside. Uh, the amendment was voted down. I was out of town at the, for the last council meeting, but had I realized this was on the agenda, I would have submitted written comments. So I apologize for having to take up your time today. But I, I could tell from the questions and the comments that were made that some background might have been missing. And I'd like to take the, a couple minutes just to fill in some of that background. Um, the council approved establishing a dog park in 2016. A condition of that approval was that the Fitchburg Dog Park Advocates raised about $50,000, um, for the dog park, which, which we did. And also included in that agreement was a commitment by the city to have water at the dog park. And in fact, Fitchburg's website right now says that Sunnyside offers quote-unquote hydration stations. There is no water at the dog park. The Dog Park Advocates agreed to pay for the, to have the well tested and to have a hand, to buy a hand pump, um, at the city's estimate of $3,500. We really wanted to have water before the park opened, but that didn't happen. Um, the park opened in 2019, and at the end of 2019, that's when the well was tested and everything tested fine. We have contacted this, the city, the Parks Department, at least twice a year since then, to find out what's going on with the hand pump, when we're going to have water at the dog park. And whenever I do work at the dog park, which is a couple of times a year, people always come up to me and ask me, when are we gonna have water? That would be a really nice amenity. We get a lot of compliments on the dog park, but that's one suggestion that they would like to see done. So this year, when I followed up with Parks, um, I was told that they highly recommended installing an electric, I'm not sure the technical term, Jay could probably help me out here, an electric water fountain or bubbler, depending on what state you live in or where you grew up. Um, and the reason for that was future testing and any necessary curing of problems would be easier and less expensive, uh, with a water fountain instead of a hand pump. In other words, the Parks Department was, was suggesting spending a few more dollars now and saving, saving more dollars down the road. At the time, Parks estimated that the cost for the water fountain would be 20, $20,000 to $25,000. As a show of support and to help defray the cost to the city, the Dog Park Advocates offered to pay an additional $7,000 for the water fountain bubbler, whatever you want to call it, which would bring our total contribution for a water source to $10,500. We have been waiting for water at the Sunnyside Dog Park for four years. And we would really like to see it become a reality. And that's the reason that we made our additional contribution of $7,000 contingent on having a water fountain established, put in place this year. We, we, we wanted to sort of light the fire and get this done. Like I said, we've been waiting for four years.
Diane, I'm really sorry. I, I should have mentioned this, that, uh, we have to, unfortunately, we limit, uh, the discussion to three minutes for, for people.
Oh, I thought it was five. I only have one more minute.
No, I'm sorry.
No? Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, but I think, like I mentioned, we can't necessarily have discussion. But I think probably the best course of action would be there's three people who did not vote yes. And obviously one of those people needs to change their vote. And so I would maybe recommend reaching out to those people to see if you can get one of them to change their vote and-
And then what is the process?
Uh, then they would contact probably Chad would be the best option and, uh, about possibly bringing it back.
Okay.
At that point in time.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all I have for that. So consent agenda is next. Is there a motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jay?
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. Anything people want to do individually?
Yes, um, this is the item we talked about. Is that after the consent agenda?
After this, yeah.
Okay.
Looks like nothing that anyone wants to take out individually, so seeing nothing. All in favor of approving consent agenda? Say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, consent agenda is approved. And Joe?
Yes, I would like to move, um, Resolution 12022, um, the Terrace Resolution to the top, um, because we have a guest.
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. All in favor of moving up the Park Commission Resolution to right now? Say aye.
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 And you want to oppose? All right, then that is moved up. Uh, Julia had to step out for a second. So I don't know if Joe or Jay, one of you would like to make the motion for this? So I know, I think you co-sponsored the-
Sure. Um, I move Resolution R12022, establishing criteria for the granting of special privileges for use of street rights of way for terrace gardens.
Second.
Seconded by Jay. And did, sorry, Julie, we, we had to, Joe did the motion for you. Did Park Commission approve the terrace gardens?
Uh, no, they didn't, uh, they didn't vote. They, they, I wasn't in that meeting, but they, I watched the meeting and they recommend like 20 things that there is part of the bucket. But there was a lengthy discussion, but they didn't vote it.
All right, all right. So kind of no, not no comment, but no, no, uh, I guess recommendation? All right, what about Public Works?
Public, Public Works, uh, denied the motion, uh, five to zero or zero to five.
All right, so Public Works denied, RCC? Oh, it says it's-
It was deferred at the June 6th meeting and denied at June 20th.
Okay, all right, RCC?
We deferred to council without a recommendation. And I can, I can kind of summarize some of the comments when we get to discussion.
So you didn't do a motion, but you had some feedback?
No, we did a, we did a, we just did a motion to refer to council without a recommendation.
Oh, no recommendation? Oh, okay.
No recommendation.
What about tree advisory?
Uh, we denied. I have some recommendation.
All right, all right. Uh, I don't know if Joe or Jay, one of you wanna speak to what this is?
We'll tag team. So I'll give a little background context, um, before we invite, uh, our, our speaker up. But, um, essentially, the background is, um, I had a, um, a neighbor, uh, reach out to me. He's in the audience, and, um, he's a resident of our district. He, um, asked in 2021 whether or not he could, um, plant a, uh, garden in the terrace. And essentially, the, the whole reason behind it was, uh, he's a pretty giving guy. Does a lot in the neighborhood, fixes people's bikes, uh, for really low price. And, uh, he wanted to basically grow a veggie garden that anybody in the neighborhood can just walk by, pick tomatoes, basil, whatever, whatever he was growing. Um, I reached out to Public Works, and, uh, they said as far as they knew that there was no issue, um, with doing that. Um, he grew a garden over the summer, went well, used cinder blocks, um, and, um, put a nice little sign, let folks know, you know, that they could take, uh, you know, veggies. And, um, next spring, uh, this spring, he ended up getting a fine for it. So he reached out to me. Um, I think I reached out to either Chad. Um, I, I believe that's who I went through, and, um, we found out that he couldn't. So, um, once I found out why, I reached out to, uh, Alder Allen just because I know he's got, um, you know, background knowledge on the council about these types of issues. Um, he agreed to put together a resolution that we co-authored. Um, I know there's been a lot of back and forth in committees about this. Um, and we can sort of get to that when we get to the meeting. But essentially, the heart of this resolution is to allow, um, you know, folks to be able to have an access to do something like this. Um, I see it in Madison all the time. If you go on the east side, um, you see these gardens all over the place. And even in our neighborhood, you see, uh, people growing prairie grass and native plants and all sorts of things that obstruct view, views of, uh, and, and access to homes, uh, from, in the right of way. Um, I figured if we at least developed some sort of a process, we'd be able to have a way for folks to be able to do it. Um, I, I acknowledge that there are some complications. And, uh, after reading the comments, um, you know, from committees and from staff, I, I realize there, there can be a lot of challenges with the, um, resolution, the way it's written. So I'm open to us discussing a way to make this happen. But ultimately, my starting point is if somebody can't grow a veggie garden to be able to help their neighbors, um, you know, that's, that's sort of a non-starting point to, um, the conversation. But if you are sort of in favor of allowing the ability to be able to do something like this, um, I ask that we consider this resolution in some sort of amended form, um, so that we can move forward with this. And I don't want to cause a bunch of undue burden and undue work on, um, staff, alders, or any unintended consequences. I just want to be able to, you know, provide this type of access. I'll pass it off to Alder Allen to be able to add to this.
Uh, well, I, you know, I, I don't have a lot to say about it. This has a lot of words in it. Um, I started out drafting this by looking at the current, uh, resol- we currently have a resolution on the books that allows for people to put a basketball hoop in their terrace or at the end of a cul-de-sac. That's something that people can already do. Um, uh, and, um, I thought, well, if you can already put a basketball hoop there and play in the street, um, then why wouldn't you be able to have a garden there and grow some food? Uh, so I started out using that as a guideline. And then I, it was brought to my attention that Madison had an ordinance for this already. And Madison allows terrace gardens by right. If you are a property owner in Madison, you can just go ahead and do this. You don't have to have the city's permission. It's already in the ordinance and says you can do it. Um, so my, so I started looking through the Madison ordinance, and I stole a large portion of that and put it in here. Um, there, there are a lot of technical things that I didn't get into. Like I noticed one of the staff comments was about vision triangles. And, um, because the overall height of things in the terrace garden is limited to 30 inches, I just didn't see vision triangles as coming up because most cars are taller than 30 inches. Um, I just didn't see that really being an issue here. Um, I, I, I do understand, um, the desire that maybe this should just be done as an ordinance, and maybe it should be at some point. I wanted to try this. This is really just a way to try this out and see if, if this works. And if there's a lot of interest in doing this, I mean, if we go through and there's only one or two residents that decide to do this every year, then it may not be worth putting much more city time into. Um, but if, you know, if, if the idea catches on and there's, there's lots and lots of people who are interested in it, then maybe we should look at doing something a lot more detailed, uh, for the future. I, I, I put about 12 hours into this. Um, that doesn't mean you have to pass it just because I put time into it. But, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a couple of amendments to this anyway as we move on through the discussion here. But, um, I think, I, I think it's just a way of meeting a need that's come up from, from various residents. And, um, you know, part of our, part of our role here as council members is to not find ways to say no to things. It's to find ways to say yes. So I think this is a way to say yes to this. And, um, if stuff doesn't work, you know, like, like it's, like it says in the, in the ordinance or in the resolution, this is for, for a one-year permit. So if the city decides that this isn't working, then at the end of the year, we terminate the program and it goes away. Um, if it's working and it's taking off, then maybe we do, do some more work into it and formalize it in an ordinance form like Madison did. Um, and, you know, if we, if, if it's, if it's something that just stays in our, in a resolution form forever, like our basketball hoop has, which has been since 1992, then, uh, um, then so be it. I, I just thought this is a way to try something out, see if we can get, uh, see if it works, see if people are happy with it, see if it, uh, creates opportunities for residents to be able to do something, uh, that they can't do right now.
All right, with that, I know we've got a couple of comments. I think Ryan, if you'd like to come up and speak, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Um, well, my alterperson, Joe, parsed things pretty well. So I'm, I'm gonna try to parse what I have written here. But, uh, thank you, Council and Mayor, for letting me come and talk about this. Um, pretty much the story is, is, is what, uh, Joe said. Uh, I was looking for a way to help support my community. Um, in particular, during the pandemic, um, there were lots of people in my community that were really struggling with food. So, um, I looked for an opportunity to help kind of support the community. And one of the things that I recalled, uh, from my time living in the city of Madison was being able to put gardens in the terrace. And it was a great opportunity to be able to meet my neighbors, um, to be able to, uh, kind of build that community, build that, uh, sustainability and, and tight-knit neighborhood. Um, so, uh, I reached out to him and got the go-ahead, uh, built up the raised beds. And I had a lot of really wonderful conversations with neighbors, and I made a lot of connections. Um, it was kind of a hit, and I really, really enjoyed it. Uh, this spring, uh, getting the, the notice that, uh, I had to remove all of the, uh, raised beds was a, a little shocking to me, uh, I'll admit, and I was a little bit disheartened. Um, but I knew that the first thing that I probably should do would be to contact my alterperson and see if there was a way that we could alter, uh, the existing rules to be able to, to, you know, provide this opportunity to not only myself, but to anybody else, uh, who might, uh, you know, also want to, um, grow something in the terrace. Whether that's vegetables to feed themselves, vegetables to feed their neighborhood, pollinator gardens, rain gardens to help with water runoff, um, any, any sort of other things. So, uh, Alder Maldonado connected me with Alder Allen, and we had, uh, several conversations. And, uh, he put together a pretty comprehensive resolution, um, which includes a, a lot of things. Um, I, I'll note along the way, uh, he did point out to me that the existing raised beds that I had built, um, not only, uh, would they not fit the resolution that he was putting together, but they technically didn't follow the city of Madison's guidelines. Um, mostly that's the reason, uh, or, or the, the reason for that is because I was told there were no rules. So I kind of built them, uh, kind of the way that was the most efficient for me, using reclaimed materials. Um, so, uh, I'll say I'm excited, uh, that the resolution provides guidelines and structure for homeowners, um, to be able to do this in a way that's, um, a little bit more uniform. Um, I'll also point out, um, there's some images, um, that were being shared. These are images from around the city of Fitchburg as, uh, as currently exists. So there are people who are planting gardens using stones around trees and things like that already. Um, so why not provide them with a framework that tells them kind of what's acceptable and what's not? Um, because currently, those, uh, settings would also technically qualify to, to be cited.
And that is a little over three minutes, so perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I also had a email, I shared this with the council as well, from Troy Klein, who is from Fitchburg. I'll read what I can. It's a little long here. "This proposed resolution may best be viewed as part of a larger discussion on how Fitchburg allows which uses of unpaved permeable public lands, which includes all of the lands which are owned or controlled by Fitchburg and simply the terrace areas and cul-de-sacs. Fitchburg public lands also include the terrace areas of all streets, unpaved centers of roundabouts, traffic control circles, the area along multi-use paths, seal land, lands and easements used by city or private utilities, and parks. Madison's ordinance, Chapter 10.25 Plantings on Terraces and related ordinances are cohesive, comprehensive, time-tested, may be used as a model for a similar Fitchburg ordinance. Madison ordinance lists the responsibilities of city staff, their engineering division, their department of planning and community and economic development, their food and alcohol policy council administrator, their waterfall works, their parks department, their police department, and responsibilities of residents. Madison's ordinance and terrace treatment policy specifies which, what requires a permit only for five very specific situations of interest in the engineering division for any terrace. The ordinance and policy carefully do not conflict with other ordinances and Madison policies. References are made to other pre-existing Madison policies and ordinances on invasive species, preferred plantings, permanence, public work impacts, rain gardens, maximum heights, setbacks, vision clearance, distance restrictions, deer's hotline, obligations, etc. Three, the burden on existing city resources, especially staff, needs to be considered. City staffing may be characterized as always being extra-lean. Permits imply enforcement and administration costs and place the city staff in the unambiguous role of enforcer and active at some level monitoring. There's no sense to having a permit unless it serves a public purpose and is usable public enforcement mechanisms. When a permit fee is charged, the fee needs to be related to the reason for the permit, reflect the true cost of the city, and not simply be a number pulled out of thin air unless mandated by state law, etc. Any fee amount, even no fee, that effectively is a subsidy to encourage that policy needs to be acknowledged upfront as a subsidy to promote a greater public good. Any restrictions, prohibitions, or prescriptions must serve a public purpose if present in any city terrace policy and be equitable without implied or structural bias to any class, e.g. renters, of city resident. Four, using Madison's ordinance as a guide, there are numerous city departments involved in making a terrace policy useful. There are many interrelated policies that need to collectively be in place for similar Fitchburg ordinance to be effective. Fitchburg especially needs a uniform planting flora policy, including invasive species for all public lands, including terraces, extends Fitchburg's ordinance, Chapter 54 Trees and Shubs Policy. The revised Chapter 54 needs to promote a uniform city planting policy in a synergistic manner for all city lands. This uniform policy may encourage climate-resistant, invasive-species-resistant, deep-rooted, permanent plantings, which should not require energy or city water resources. Positive city budget consideration. There needs to be provisions that any city resident, any type of street, for access to utilize the terrace, abutting the residence with due permission if needed of the property owner or their agent. The person or organization listed as the owner and city property tax rolls may be the less definition of the property owner. A requirement to obtain the permission of others on a street for any permitted plantings on the terrace is not a good idea. That is a city staff responsibility. As a terrace land owner, as the city employee, if permission's needed." You know, a couple more points, but that's a little over three minutes there, and everyone does have that email. All right, I think what might be helpful is, it sounds like there's a lot of great discussion at the different committees. So maybe I'll ask, uh, the people from each committee, just maybe go over discussion in those meetings. Uh, I know, Julie, you said you watched the Parks Commission meeting. Do you want to share kind of their thoughts, kind of questions, concerns?
Um, I had to bring back those. But, um, the biggest one were that, um, why do we need to have a permit to do this? Because there are already a lot of people doing this in the city, and you can see it. You know, people have a lot of bedflower around the, um, mail post. Um, you know, they have rocks around trees. I, I saw a retention wall in the right of way. Um, so, so the question is, why do we need to put this, you know, a permit? And, and who is, who is gonna be monitoring the enforcement of that, you know? Um, so do we have capacity in our staff to do this? To issue permit, to tell the people that they need to remove, uh, you know, the, you know, the structure by, I don't know, by November, I don't know what it is? Um, so the question is about, um, uh, I think they also mentioned that there is some contradictory language in the resolution too. Um, but the important thing is, we don't need to have a permit. Um, I don't, I don't think the option that there was people to have to pay for the permit. It's, you know what I mean? So I think there are more barriers and more bureaucracy that we are, you know, uh, transferring to, to neighbors. to, to neighbors. So if the people already they are doing, maybe we need to come up with a plan and say, you know, uh, you can continue doing this, but these are the, you know, like a guide or, you know, restriction or whatever. So, um, so, and there are like a 20 more, you know, there, but they are the similar language. And in three committee, the main concern was about enforcement, capacity of the staff to do it, and, and if people are, start digging hole close to the tree, maybe they can damage the roots of the tree, or they can water, and there are too much water. So how we can protect our, this, the, uh, the city, the, the, the tree, that they are city property, okay? Um, and then they talk about that, I know that there are some neighborhoods, like the Seminole, the Highland of Seminole, or the State of Seminole, they have a lot of covenants and they have the duocation committees, that they have more restriction on what people can do in the yards. So this is another topic. But, uh, the issue was, this is what it was discussed on this two commission, and, you know, is, um, I think our staff is already a capacity that they don't need another extra thing to, to do, to monitor. I was reading in the ordinance that they mentioned about, uh, the police department and public works. I don't want my police and public work spending time on doing this. So, and then I'm gonna, I give you my personal opinion after there, okay?
Yeah, no problem. Yep, yeah, I'll just go through the committees. Uh, public works, either Dave or Jim, do you want to speak to it?
I, I can, I can speak to it if I, if I, if I, my voice gives out, Jim can join in. Uh, we, we spoke to the, uh, building inspection department, who, you know, this would fall on, and they, they said, we're really not, we, we don't want any more administrative load on, on us. So it was, that was one big thing. Um, second, you know, I think you all know, I'm very much in favor of growing things in the, in the city, you know, I'm one of the biggest advocates. But in the, in the terrace is not a good place. That is the worst soil. You know, on the street, the, the plows come by, they plow the snow up there, there's sand and salt. Uh, it's, it's really poor soil there, or it gets, it gets worse every year. It's not the i- ideal location. That's why people are putting rocks and, and things in there. Um, the, they have the capability, they can, they can garden all the way from the, uh, from the sidewalk all the way up to their house. It's not like, you know, where there's no room for them to garden. And I, I would encourage them, I don't think we need this. Container, uh, container pot gardening, uh, is very effective and very dense, um, works very well. We have the community gardens, and also we looked at, we, we recognized there's those, those covenants, and we, we thought, you know, you pay a $30 fee and then, uh, you know, they don't take care of it, and next thing you know, we're spending tons of time trying to deal with it. So I, I just feel we'd be better off not, not taking this up.
And then Gabriella, do you want to speak to the RCC discussion?
Yes. Uh, so RCC focused a lot on, they, they were supportive of the concept of, of allowing terrace plantings in, um, in general, and not just gardens, but, you know, rain gardens and native plantings and anything that the, the homeowner might want to put in that, on that piece of property. Um, the, the conversation did center around the fact that they, they didn't think a permit was really necessary, or, and they really didn't want a fee, although I don't think the, the resolution includes a fee.
$30.
Okay, yeah. They thought that a fee and, and the, and the permit itself were unnecessary, but that they did want there to be a process by which, um, the city allows gardening or other sort of plantings in the terrace. And then also just a, also quite a long discussion about the, the, the clear inequity that is here, where people all over the city are already doing this and are not getting fined, including some of the people that are on RCC. They're like, oh, well, I do something that technically is against the ordinance, um, but that someone in one particular neighborhood, they get the call and then they get the fine, and, and that that is, um, that's wrong. So we, we have to address this, uh, and we, we can't just be completely applying this unfairly. So that was also part of the discussion as well, but because, so they, they, we referred it to council without a recommendation, just because they didn't think they had a, they wanted there to be more discussion in council.
So to summarize, it seems like, for, for the most part, committees agree that, that this is happening throughout the city, that we, I think probably the biggest concern is just if there's cinder blocks or something like that that's raising, that could be damaging plows or causing other inju- injuries or things like that. But it sounds like the idea of a permit, from what I'm hearing, is people are kind of going, why go through all this extra mir- memorable and fees and all this ridiculousness? Let's just say it's okay, but maybe just concerned about what you're putting in there if there's bricks and stuff like that. People necessarily want that, is, was I think what I'm hearing, but I've got, I'll go online, I think Joe, Julia, Jay, Gabriella, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I personally, I'd be fine with a fee not being removed, and I'd be fine with us completely allowing this and, uh, not having any administrative barriers at all. Um, the, the, I guess to the, the only point I, I would have is, um, the idea of like poor soil on the terrace. Uh, there's very poor soil on my terrace, but I would think that a raised bed garden would remedy that because you have a space with a box or cinder blocks or whatever, you put fresh soil in it, and that soil is good, and you can grow something in it. Um, to the point of like, kind of what's rooted, I, just my experience gardening, I've been gardening since I lived in my home, um, there's not a lot of veggies that like grow deep roots that would get that deep into soil that would mess with the tree roots. I, I can't think of any fruits or vegetables at all. Um, the only thing that, that is deeply rooted in my garden is like when these volunteer tree, oak trees end up growing, I gotta like pull them out and dig to get the roots out. But I just, I don't see any of that necessarily messing with either like utility lines or, or the tree roots or anything like that. If, if somebody knows better than I do, like, please feel free to correct me. Um, and to the point of like obstructing or being an issue for like police, again, I've, I've driven down, um, uh, it's on the way to Seminole, I'm forgetting the street name, some street that curves around, uh, um, somebody jump in. But, uh, I see, there's like three houses on the way there that have native plants, and those native plants grow very, very, very tall and could obstruct anything. And I never seen any problem with that. I've seen some houses that are right next to me that have these tall pine trees, trees lining as a natural fence. I don't, I've never seen any problem with any of that. And, um, I, I don't know, I, and I'm reading through some of the comments in these resolution about like vegetables making things less desirable than flowers. I just, I just think that's ridiculous. Um, and I also think, uh, it's, there's one comment about, um, encouraging people to raid garden items by people passing by sidewalks or streets, which is exactly the point of why he's putting the garden, is he wants people to go get him, he put up a sign for it. He wouldn't have done it if he wouldn't have wanted that, he would put it in his backyard. So I, I just think, you know, some of these comments are a little bit, um, extreme, and it's just a really simple concept, like people want to grow a garden in front of their house, and people do it all over the city. And I've gone to new developments in Madison and seen those, even in those new developments. So I just think this is a little bit of an alarmist reaction to this, and we should find the most simple way possible to be able to kind of allow something like this to happen, because it's a good thing. I don't know, I, I just don't see why it's a bad thing.
Uh, Julia, go ahead.
So my personal opinion, okay, is, um, I think this one, to impose an ordinance with a permit and, and a fee is another barrier. Um, I, I draw my, my district, and I can tell you, even in my block, you know, if I go back and tell my neighbor, hey, by the way, you need to pay, you need to have a permit and pay for that, they're gonna go ballistic. There is everywhere in the city you go, especially in the old neighborhood, that they don't have like, um, the sidewalk, you can see more. I can see people with vegetable garden, with prairies, they go to the curb, you know what I mean? Uh, I, I saw a retention wall. Osmosden, you go there, there is almost half a block, there is a retention wall on the right-of-way. Um, I don't know, they have permit with the city, I don't, I don't know that, but it's there, you know? Um, so I think that people are already doing this. I think we need to, um, we need to tell people, um, you know, that if they are going to continue to do, if they want to, I don't have any issue with people putting raised, uh, raised garden or flower beds, um, uh, but, um, but if they want to do it, you know, they need to understand that there should be a, a non-permanent structure that encase that the city, and they need to understand that the city owns that, that right-of-way. And if the city need to have access, and you have a garden or vegetable garden, you know, the city have priority because if they need to do, I don't know, they need to dig something or do some project, you know, they need to understand that that part of the, the sidewalk doesn't belong to them, but they can use it. You know what I mean? So I don't have any issue with that, but, um, uh, but also I don't want, uh, start putting more barrier, more, uh, permits, some fees, or, um, because I, I am concerned about, uh, staff, uh, time, um, enforcement, and, and then, you know, um, you know, and drive the city, if people are already doing it. So, and, you know, and I, I don't see that issue, you know?
Jay.
Yeah. Um, so I want to just address some of these things that have been brought up. There's a number of canards that keep getting thrown out there. One of them, as Julia just mentioned, is people are already doing it. It's true, they are. It is also illegal. It is illegal for them to do that. Uh, that is under Wisconsin statute, and, um, we have adopted that statute as part of our general code of ordinances. So it is illegal for people to do that. So in order to fix this, we either have to have a resolution like what I've proposed that allows for a special privilege, or we need to rewrite our ordinance like Madison's that just gives people the right to use the terrace land, uh, by right, without having any oversight by the city at all. Those are the two options. Right now, what they're doing is illegal. I understand that you don't like that someone would have to pay a fee. That, I mean, this, this obviously isn't a revenue source. Um, this isn't a way the city's going to make money, that's not the idea here. Uh, but, um, in order to fix the situation as it currently exists, we have to do something. We can't just say, well, you know, you can go ahead and keep doing that. You can't do that. We are, actually have to enact some legislation as this body to solve this. So this was my attempt at doing that. If you have a better attempt, then please write something up and submit it, and we can, we can go on from there. But this is my, this is my shot at this. As far as people talking about enforcement and administering it, oh my God. I, I have been involved in Fitchburg politics for over 30 years, and I remember back when, uh, Doug Morissette was mayor, one of the things that he, that lit a, lit a bug under his butt was the fact that people were putting basketball hoops up on terraces, and they were putting them at the end of cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, um, and he didn't like that. So he had the council pass an ordinance that, that's, that basically reiterated the state statute and said, you can't do that. We filled the council chambers with people, and I remember talking with Chad about this, he remembers that night, there were people who were just, they were spitting nails in here. They were angry that we had, we had written them all up, we had sent building inspection out to enforce this, and so we created a special privilege for basketball hoops, which still exists today, and is part of what I used to base this particular special privilege off of. So is that the only way to do this? No, it's not the only way to do it. It was the easiest way, given the amount of time I had dealing with all the other stuff that's going on right now. Um, but basically right now, the city staff time that's involved with dealing with, uh, basketball hoops is every year someone has to come in and fill out an application with the city clerk's office and pay a fee. That's it. Now, um, in, in the case of our neighbor who's sitting out here, building inspection decided to go and fi- and do an enforcement action on him without anything in place at all. We've got no ordinance, no resolution, no nothing, and building inspection decided to go do a, uh, an enforcement action, and we don't have an ordinance that says they can't or that they can, or that they should or they shouldn't, whatever. Um, and I, Gabriella brought up a good point, that some people are getting cited for this, some people aren't. So we do need to have a more standardized policy. That just has to be done. So the enforcement, none of this, I, I, I just don't know where this notion comes from, that it's going to take all these hours of staff time to deal with this. It's not going to take any more staff time than what it takes to deal with the basketball hoops right now. Most of these things, I mean, it's not like we have, we have basketball, we have a, we have a special division of our police department that goes out and looks for basketball hoops so they can write citations to people. We don't do that. Most of this stuff is complaint-driven. If somebody, if, if a neighbor sees it, they don't like it, it's creating a problem, they call the city, the city sends out building inspection, building inspection writes a citation unless they have the, the special privilege application turned in. So, um, I, I think that this is, I, this is all just a bunch of, of hoopla for nothing, and, um, I think it's an opportunity to try to give our residents and the ability to do something they cannot currently do under our ordinances. Uh, and I don't, I, I just don't see all this danger that seems to be, uh, seen by other people. Thank you.
Gabriella.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, on the whole, I really like this resolution, and, and as our resident that testified mentioned, it's like, it just gives criteria for what you should do, what the city is okay with, um, which I think is important for, for clarity. Um, I actually don't mind the permit requirement. I, I kind of see it in the same way that we have like bike registrations. Remember we removed the fee for bike registrations? You don't have to register it, but you should. Um, and it'd be nice if you did so that you knew what the, well, it's like, it would be nice if they registered. Obviously, we're not gonna go by and, and find people if they're not registered, but it's just a, a mechanism by which if someone does complain about someone's garden, they can say, okay, well, here's a permit process, go through it, make sure that you are in compliance with, with this resolution, and then, um, continue on with your garden, or make adjustments accordingly. Um, but overall, I mean, I, I just, I, I think it's okay to remove the fee, I, I'd be supportive of removing the fee, but I do actually think we should move for, this forward today, simply because I think we should allow our residents to, that have been unfairly cited for this, to move forward. Um, I think we should vacate any of the fees that have been, that have been issued for this this year. Um, and, and I, I do think maybe we should revisit this soon and, and see if we can make it an ordinance, see if we can make it more. But I, 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 I think what Jay's pointed at the beginning, where it's like, I, we should find a way to say yes to this, because, um, it's for, for equity issues, but also just because I think people should be allowed to plant a garden. So if you think that too, I, um, I think we should pass this, and then we can continue working on it going forward.
Julia.
Yes, one thing I want to mention is, I, you know, I think we can use the, the language of the, the resolution, like an educational guide, you know? I don't have any issue with the, some of the language here or how, what we should do in the terrace, but I am not gonna vote for a permit, and I am not gonna vote for a, for a fee, because people are already doing that. And if we are gonna start putting fine, I agree with, you mentioned Gabriella, that Ryan was, you know, fine, um, what about half of the city that have these vegetable gardens, or, or flower bed, or, you know, or rock gardens on the right-of-way? You know what I mean? So I don't think that people are gonna, maybe we need to ask people, is, you know, because I think it's gonna be very controversial, it's a barrier, because if we go back and say all these people, oh, by the way, you know what? You need to have a, for this small flower garden that you have there, you need to have a permit, you need to go to city hall and do that, and then you have to pay $30 a, a year. No, I, I, you know, I agree with most of the language here, but I am not gonna support a permit, and I am not gonna support a fee.
So it's, I mean, it sounds like what I'm hearing from, I remember people is that they like to have no fee, and it seems like if there is a permit, instead of being an annual permit, maybe it can just be a one-time, non-transferable, but if you get the permit, as long as you live there, it's fine. If you sell the house, then the next person, if they want to keep doing it, they would have to get the permit. Uh, just a, a thought. I've got Joe and Randy on the list. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I was also gonna suggest, if we do, if we have a permit, to allow the permit to be able to be an electronic application, so that somebody could just go to the website and fill something out, like, quick, like, this is what I want to do, here's the resolution itself, or the restrictions of what you can and can't do, check, click- itself, or the restrictions of what you can and can't do, check, click, I have read this, go from there. Because I, I mean, just personally, as a homeowner, what I've experienced is like, I've gotten fined for stuff, even before I was on council, and when I called the city and asked for clarification, usually the response I get is, it's fine, we'll waive the fee, just don't do it again, here's the rules, go from there. Um, I mean, I think it's framed in a way that like, you know, like Ryan had to go through coming to me because he knows that I represent him on the council, um, and I was able to connect him with city staff, but I don't know if all residents know that. I, I would assume that somebody's reaction is gonna be the same as mine, which is to call the city and say, I got this, what am I gonna do? And then talk to city staff and figure it out, or contact their alder. I, I hear you, Alder Ratafara, but I, I think, and, and I agree with waiving the fee, completely. Um, but I, I think, like, if we do have to have a permit because it goes against city or state statute, that we should make it as seamless and easy as possible, have it on our website somewhere that somebody can find really easily, and not make it a thing. Like, I don't want it to be a big thing. And, and I agree, Mayor, that, that it should be a one-time thing, and that it wouldn't necessarily be. So I'm open to introducing some sort of amendment, or allowing another alder to do so. Um, but I, I agree with everybody that this should not be a lot. Like, we shouldn't have to go through a lot to make this happen.
All right, Randy?
Yeah, I, I've heard a number of, excuse me, a number of different points of views, and it's, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of bad. And um, Alder Ratafara, for change, I actually agree with you. And um, I, I'm not crazy about a, the permit or the, or, or the fees. Um, we have a large number of residents in the city already that are probably in violation, including myself. And I, I, I mean, I don't have any raised beds. I mean, the raised beds that I saw in pictures, I have a concern with, maybe from a safety standpoint. Uh, children on bicycles and running into it. There's plenty of land from the road right of way into the home where a raised bed could go. Um, if you want to plant something that's not raised up where there's a safety issue, I mean, there's still a lot of unknowns. Um, but I'm gonna echo Alder Ratafara's uh, points about permits and fees. We need to have them removed, or maybe, to your point, Joe, or to Mayor, about um, something about what being grandfathered in, so.
All right, thank you. We will have building inspection come by your house tomorrow. Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, the, so what we have here is this resolution. Um, we don't have an ordinance change in front of us. In order to put this into ordinance form, it would have to be pretty much completely rewritten in something different. So, uh, if somebody wants to take that task on, you're certainly welcome to do it. Uh, as I mentioned at the beginning of this, I put this together as something that we can try out, and if it's working, then we can write an ordinance to do it later, uh, maybe in a year or two. Uh, but right now, um, what you've got is this resolution. Now, the, the, I, I agree with city staff comments that the fee amount should be put into the, into the fee schedule, and if we, if, if it wants to be zero, that's fine. Um, this is, I just picked the same fee that we charged for the basketball hoop ordinance, uh, basketball hoop permit. So, um, and yes, I know a lot of people are doing it, and um, hopefully, uh, we can come to some way to move forward on this. Uh, but right now, I mean, you, we, we can't just take this and turn it into an ordinance at this point. This is gonna have to be completely redone, if that's what you want to do.
I guess, based on what I'm hearing too, if this doesn't pass, I would ask, you know, staff to work on an ordinance with some of the feedback here, because I think what I'm hearing is, this is happening in a lot of places, and I think probably the biggest concern I hear from staff is just something kind of raised permanent, and so I think that's probably the one piece where, and maybe it's okay if you have a raised bed, as long as you remove it in the winter, so that, we, and plows are coming through, because sometimes they have to move the snow back off the curb, and that's, you know, in the terrace, actually the blade will sometimes come through there. Obviously, being, you know, not damaging street trees, things like that, you need to be careful of, but, I mean, I guess I would ask staff to work on that, and to maybe hold off on enforcement of this while we're working on it, because also Valerie is going on maternity leave soon, so I, she's got a lot on her plate with the ton of mess and other things going on, so I don't know that it's realistic to expect this to come back before she goes on maternity leave. But, I do think that there's, this is happening a lot. What I'm hearing, I think, from people on the council is that, we want to somehow make this okay, this is happening already, we don't want people to get fined, and so, we don't want it to be a, a burden on costs, we don't necessarily want a fee on it. If we are gonna do a permit, it sounds like people are okay with the idea of, you just get it once, for as long as you own the property, you don't have to redo this every year, or anything like that. Um, so I, I mean, those are kind of some of the general guidelines that I'm hearing. Uh, like I said though, unfortunately, I, I don't know that this is gonna happen until this winter, just because of Valerie's schedule. I mean, she's going on maternity leave in a few months. Chad, would you like to weigh in, maybe?
Yeah, I'm hearing a lot of the same things that you've heard as well, and I think uh, what would be helpful for staff, I can certainly take back the feedback uh, in regards to the, to the fees and the permit side of things, and also, uh, I seem to be hearing, and I know that staff had similar concerns about uh, raised beds uh, within the terraces, uh, at least of certain heights, so at least maybe take a look at that, and take a deeper look at the Madison ordinance, and what some of the, the components of that might look at. But I will say that I think it would be important for us to, to, to be uh, clear here from a staff perspective, and that capacity right now is, is certainly uh, very thin to, to address this in, in the, the current growing season. Uh, obviously, Aaron, the mayor's already mentioned, uh, the city attorney's pending leave. We're also in the, the busiest time of uh, public works right now with road, road constructions, projects, and all the other things that are going on, and they certainly would have a critical role in, in providing input in this. So, I will certainly be happy to take this back um, to staff. We can work off of what Alder Allen has already created, uh, as a, as a template to begin our work off of, and, and make uh, some modifications and, and recommendations for the, for the body here to consider in the future, if that uh, is the direction that you provide.
Gabrielle, and then Julia.
I was gonna make a motion to, um, just to see what the council says about this, to change the fee schedule to zero, and to, I, I guess honestly, like, I, I'd like to make a motion to remove the requirement for a permit, and make this resolution guidelines for guiding residents on how to plant terrace gardens, which in turn removes the fee.
Okay.
I think.
Education question?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, go ahead.
So, do you want to remove the permit and the fee? From the, from the, from this resolution?
Yes.
I guess I would just ask Chad, I think, I understand the desire for that, but I, I worry about implementing anything that hasn't maybe been completely vetted, and if it's gonna be coming back as an ordinance instead of a, a resolution, it seems like.
That turns into an ordinance?
Well, we, when it comes back with staff, it would come back as an ordinance instead of this.
Okay, can I?
So, I mean, that's, I guess, I think, that's the, by maybe concern, I guess you can, you know, change over to ordinance at that point in time, but um, I think there's an understanding that we don't necessarily want, public, I don't know why building inspection, I don't think they have much time to go around enforcing this anyway, but there's a lot of these out there that are technically illegal right now, and we need to do something about it. I don't think just passing anything is going to help necessarily versus waiting for it to be done. I won't say right, because that's not true, but to be done with the, the city attorney's input, which I think is really valuable, versus passing something that doesn't necessarily have her blessing, that, that's a little bit of concern. So, I have Julia, and then Jay.
My other question is, can we waive any fee until we have a formal ordinance, ordinance from, from people, like, you know, from Ryan and anyone that? Can we do that? I don't know.
Are you, are you referring to a fee to have the garden, or from a citation?
No, the citation, the fine.
So, uh, what you would want to do if you haven't done so already, I'm not familiar with when you are actually cited, and if you've had a court appearance or not. Um, I would actually recommend that you reach out to the city attorney, and have a conversation with her about the situation, and I can certainly update her on what the council has talked about this evening, and where things are at. So, um, that's, that's what I would do if I were you. Um, this, this bottle, this body does not have that authority. Only the judge has the authority to do that.
All right, Jay.
Yeah, I, I understand the spirit of what Gabrielle is trying to do, um, but it won't work for a couple of reasons. Um, in a resolution form like this, uh, a special privilege under a resolution would have to be granted by permit, under the state statute. If, if we want to, eh, but that adds another complication to what the mayor's suggesting, because if you want to make it an ordinance like Madison has, where everybody has just the right to put these terrace gardens in, no matter what, they, they can just do it as long as they comply with the guidelines, the city doesn't have then, the ability to say, but if you sell your property, it has to go away. We can't do that, because the, because if you have the terrace garden by right in the ordinance, then you have it by right, whether it's you, or, or someone who buys the property from you, or your heirs if you die, or whatever. So, uh, there's, there are, there are conflicting ideas here that aren't compatible with each other. So, like I said, I thought doing it this way was the, the easiest way to solve a problem. Uh, but if the council doesn't like this way, then it's certainly welcome to explore another method.
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment. I'm gonna try this out and see if it works. Um, I would like to make an amendment that we reduce the fee schedule to zero dollars, um, that we make the um, permit process a one-time electronic optional application. Um, period.
I don't think we have the ability to do it electronically, do we, Chad?
Well, I think, uh, I think we're.
Actually, first, can I get a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
If there's a second.
Second.
All right, second, Gabrielle. All right, go ahead, Jay.
I think we might be a bit ahead of ourselves, because typically the fee schedule is adopted annually, uh, from my understanding. So, unless we were specifically going to take up the fee schedule and put this in there, right now it's not even part of the fee schedule. So there's, there's really no, no permit, no fee, or anything. Uh, what we're referring to earlier was, obviously, the fine that was associated with the citation that had been issued um, by building inspection. So, my thought and recommendation to the council would be, at this point in time, is there's still a lot of moving parts with this, and to direct staff to put together a recommendation on how best to proceed for council to consider. Uh, the, our resident here can have a conversation with the city attorney about the pending citation, um, and obviously I can update her as well, so hopefully that'll put that, uh, at least on hold for the time being, and then, uh, that would allow us to present, uh, more information to council, allow the city attorney to take, take a look at a few things on how best to implement this uh, program, allow city staff to reach out to the city's insurance company for some additional information, and also, again, take a deeper look at what Madison has done as an example. So I think, uh, if, if I can, that would be the recommendation that I would offer council to just, uh, press the brakes here a little bit, uh, allow us to, to get everything in order, and then look to proceed, uh, with a new, uh, recommendation, or updated recommendation for the council to consider.
And I think the, I think the advantage too, I just, one thing, I think the other advantage too, of kind of coming back with something different, is that we can now refer it again to these committees and get their input again, because there was a lot of discussion, a lot of concern. I think that's a valuable piece, that if we do bring it back again, I'd like to get that input again, and hopefully we're kind of in that right direction and right lane, based on the feedback we heard. Because I think there's a lot of concerns that we've heard from different people on committees, and I think there's a lot of value to getting their input again by referring this back out whenever we, we have that ordinance. Joe?
Yeah, um, just, I mean, that makes sense. The clarification that I would have is a, a couple of things. One, with your, like, recommendations, would that mean that those recommendations would go forth if, whether this fails or passes?
That we would be working?
Right, sort of on the investigation of this?
Yeah, the staff would put together a recommendation.
Okay. So, that doesn't change regardless of what happens in this?
I'm directing staff to do that, regardless of this passes or fails.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing, I just want to make sure I'm clear, so, you know, whatever happens with Ryan, for example, right, like, he would need to negotiate with Valerie just to kind of, I, I don't know, make sure the citation potentially gets waived, or, and I don't know if, I, I think you moved it, I don't remember if you moved it or not. Uh, like, moved the terrace back? Did you end, or did you end up moving the garden beyond the terrace?
It's still there, I lowered the height of it, so it would fall, and it would all inch my requirement from.
Yeah, so would that be an issue? Like, would he have to move that this summer if that were to occur, or does?
I think it would be difficult if he's made some modifications, and I, I certainly want to reserve my, or make my comments with some reservation on, on further consultation with the city attorney, but uh, based upon how many other occurrences there may be throughout the city, I think it would be a challenge for us to come back to this gentleman and say, we still have a problem here.
You're good.
I don't know about that, but I think that I've certainly heard enough information and seen, seen enough photos and other things that, um, we, we wouldn't want to take that.
We didn't offer legal advice, however, that looks like something I might want to say, if, if I was talking to the city attorney about a citation.
Okay, um, I withdraw my amendment then.
Okay. All right, so we still have the motion. All right, Gabrielle?
Should we table it then? So, I mean, because I don't particularly want us to vote this down. I, I, I just, I don't think that, that sounds a good message in terms of, it sounds like there's openness to.
Yeah, I think there's, you could either table it indefinitely, or you could table it to, you know, December, or something like that, or something like, and we'll have to kill it at that point. But if you table indefinitely, it's not saying yes or no, it's in, it wouldn't, I mean, you guys could take it off the table, but um, you could table indefinitely, that's another option, absolutely. Yeah.
Well, before we do that.
Yes.
I have two amendments I want to make to this.
Okay.
So at least we have something slightly different to deal with. Uh, the first one is, I want to change, uh, I want, I want to move to change the statute reference, uh, from sixty-six point oh four five to sixty-six point oh four two five, which is in the second whereas clause. And that's because the, I was using that basketball hoop ordinance as my guide, and it was done before the state recodified their statute, recodified the statute, so it had the wrong statute reference. Um, so it should read sixty-six point oh four two five. So that's the first amendment.
All right, so is that a motion right there?
Yes.
Second.
By Gabrielle. So the motion is to essentially clarify, or in refer to the correct statute. Any questions on that amendment? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that's approved, and you have another one?
And the second amendment is actually a two-part amendment. Uh, I want to, uh, I want to move to delete, parag, uh, I want to delete guideline thirteen and guideline one B, which refers to terrace gardens and cul-de-sacs. And the main reason for that is that, that's not something that's really happening anywhere in the city. It wasn't really being addressed by anybody, and it seems to just be muddying the waters. So I want to just eliminate the cul-de-sac idea from this, um, and if need be, we can revisit that at a later time, but uh, I think just getting it out of this document makes, makes things a little cleaner.
Second.
All right, same by Gabrielle. So, in my understanding, is the, is delete, delete a couple spots of language that removes cul-de-sacs?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion on that amendment?
I just want to make sure that Tracy has that, uh, completely identified what that, that amendment is. Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Yep, thank you.
All right, all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? And opposed, nay? All right, that passes as well. So we're back to the main motion with a couple of slight tweaks to it. And Gabriella maybe wants to make a motion to table?
Yeah, move to table indefinitely.
Signed by Julia. Any, oh, I can't actually discuss tabling. All right, all in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right. So we're kind of made progress. All right, thank you everyone. Back to the city administration report.
Few updates for everybody. Some recent upgrades were done to our FACTV capabilities. There was some upgrades to some equipment, which will allow our system to have better security control as well as continued access to our local broadcast through multiple multimedia platforms such as Apple TV, Roku, Amazon TV, local cable TV and live streaming. With the upgrade, we have gone from three channels to two channels. Nothing has changed overall in the programming, according to our FACTV folks. The government channel, which is still F1, and our community channel, which is F2. And this is part of a long-term strategic plan to reduce costs while continuing to provide focused services to our residents. If you have any questions about any of the upgrades, I would encourage you to talk to Jeremy Crosby about that. I have some election-related or voting-related information from our clerk's department. Postcards for the District One polling location change to the Catholic Multicultural Center will be mailed out the week of July 11th. In-person absentee voting in the clerk's office or city hall will begin July 26th through August 5th, and the hours are Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The last day to vote via an absentee ballot in the clerk's office is Friday, August 5th until 5:00 p.m. Absentee ballots were mailed out last week. They must be returned to the clerk's counter in person. And you can only return your own particular ballot, you cannot return anyone else's ballot. You can also mail the ballot back to the city via the postal service. You cannot use drop boxes. All of these items that I have mentioned are, are due to recent court rulings that have placed restrictions on absentee voting. And then finally, the, the Doxa Church has been approved by the Wisconsin Elections Commission in the town of Madison to be used as a polling location in November and beyond. So we'll be looking to bring a resolution to council that will look to adopt that as a, as a polling location. The Doxa Church, over on, I think it's on Ovation.
Used to be Rock and Jump?
Yep, used to be Rock and Jump. It's right across from Artisan Village or near the, the Quartz Health Building there. And then finally, a couple of events. First one is the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed is being held July 9th, right down below City Hall here, East Cheryl Research Park. You should expect some road closures for the, the festival that day. There's also fireworks that evening. And then on July 14th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the senior center is having a brat sale. I was informed they have 150 brats available, first come, first served. So if you want a camping permit at 5:00 a.m. with your lawn chair and your tent in order to guarantee your spot, let, let us know. That's all I have. Any questions?
Joe?
Yeah, clarifying question, I, I think maybe Tracy can answer it. For the polling place change, is there any arrangements with Little Johns to like put signage there in case people end up showing up? Just to let them know like the location is right down the street?
Yes, we can post signage on their doors so, to let people know that their polling location's changed if they do happen to go to the front doors there.
Okay, thank you.
We did that, we did that at Marketplace Fire Station when they moved, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Julia?
So can we use the drop box here in the lobby? No?
You have to hand it to a person now based on what the Republican legislature did.
Oh, I thought that, that one was okay.
And we have some signs at the vestibule there that instruct people, yeah, that, not to do that. So we obviously want folks who make the efforts to return their, their ballots to ensure that they are counted. And in order to do that, they need to be hand-delivered. And again, only your ballot can be hand-delivered. You cannot hand-deliver anyone else's.
Yeah, outreach to tell people everything that you mentioned, you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong Tracy, but I believe from past conversations you and I have had, there is information included with the absentee ballot on how to return that.
That's correct. We do have an insert that's mailed out with every absentee ballot on directions on not using the drop boxes and that they must be hand-delivered or mailed back.
All right, seeing nothing, we will move on. I will ask for one, another amendment to the agenda. Chief Morales is here in chambers and if we could maybe skip to his item so he can go home. I believe eight, A1A, if someone would like to move to do that next on the agenda, that'd be great.
So moved.
Moved by Jay.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. All in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, so we'll take that one up next. And Randy, put you on the spot here, if you would like to do a motion for that, it is under finance. And this one does require two-thirds, just FYI.
Yes, motion to approve, approve resolution R-117-22.
Sir, second? Signed by Jay. And would you like to speak to this or would you like chief to speak to this, Randy?
No, since the chief is here, we'll let him speak.
Did finance approve it?
Finance approved, yes.
All right, go ahead chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for skipping me up ahead. I could have waited, I enjoy watching you all communicate here. Just basically the police department tasers, they have a life expectancy of five years, so they're, they're up for replacement. Tasers most often, and if you've seen them in the news, they allow the ability to de-escalate and use as a less lethal option for a use of force. It is a use of force and it's, you use it in appropriate situations. But more so, it's used to prevent any injury to the person that we're using that force against. Most often to take someone into custody and to prevent injury to the officer. So it's a win-win in using this item. It's been out for, this type of technology has been out for several years and it's been for the most part very useful and effective tool for law enforcement.
All right, Jay?
What happens after five years?
They're, they're shelf life, so when we're talking about the warranty or, or if there is something that, you know, is deemed inoperable, to be able to defend that if we were sued civilly. So on the part of the warranty for, for the device, some things can be used longer than that. But when you're using that, you don't have any warranty and then liability would fall on our part if something were to operate ineffectively.
Could you use them as like a training thing at that point in time? Maybe on a council member or two if you need. Never mind. Or a mayor, maybe, you know. All right, sorry.
So, yeah, so the resolution says taser cartridges. And I don't, I, I don't, I don't know anything about how this device works, so can you, what is a taser cartridge?
It, the cartridge is the, the one that you use that deploys the prongs in the taser.
Okay, so is that the only piece that's being replaced?
No, the taser and the cartridges. They all have a shelf life of five years. Now, the tasers, just to give you additional information, you do have to ensure that it's operating. So we, when, if I pick up the taser and I'm going out for my tour duty, we do have to activate it to ensure it's operating. So it's not like you don't use them and the only time you use them is during force. We are, you, you are supposed to use the device before putting it in to ensure it's working.
And does that cartridge have to be replaced whenever you use it?
Yes, sir. Each cartridge, once it's used, is deemed inoperable. You actually, you inventory that item for the event that there will be any litigation that goes on with the use of force.
Got you.
Joe?
My question's more on the reason for a budget amendment. Is it, has, has, have the tasers just been used more frequently or did it go, did they go bad faster than expected? I'm just looking at the, the amount. And I'm assuming that 71,000 is the amount above sort of what was budgeted this year, is that correct?
If I recall correctly, yes, and it was also for increase in price and additional, additional tasers for the extra bodies that we have for the department.
If I may, yeah, the budget amendment is due to, to the cost coming in higher than what was, what was budgeted. So I can see in the resolution that about $6,600 was being, is going to need to be transferred from another account within the police department to cover that overage. That's from our disability insurance premiums that have been waived again this year.
Got it.
By the city, or by the state, I'm sorry.
So it's really 6,000 more than budgeted. Julia?
It would be great if we also add in the resolution the total cost. Because you know, if I read this, I know there is, yeah, it's an additional 6,000 what? You know what I mean? So maybe to have, add that total, it will be.
Yeah, we can do that in future.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that is approved.
Thank you. You all have a great night.
All right. Let's see, I see Wendy's online actually. Is there an item that she's here for?
She is.
Yeah, let's, let's, does anyone want to move the library board up?
So moved.
Second.
Signed by Joe, all in favor of moving the library board resolution to next on the agenda, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, and library board, Jay, would you like to do a motion?
Uh, yeah, on behalf of the library board, I would move approval of resolution R-114-22, amending the 2022 library fund budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Joe. Did library board approve?
Yes.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, would you like to speak to this or Wendy?
Well, Wendy knows all about it, so, since she took the trouble of joining our meeting, I'll let her do it.
All right, Wendy, go ahead.
Absolutely. So this is an amendment to take some savings that we had in a salary and, and health insurance from the outreach librarian being vacant early this year. And to take that money and purchase some replacement shelves in our youth services area. So our picture book collection, currently two-thirds of the shelves are face out. So you're flipping through books and you can't see the spines. I think the thought there was that kids could look through them more easily. The truth is that most, most of those items are being selected by parents, not kids. And they're kind of a nightmare for shelving and for finding anything. Because you can't see the spine label and you can't see the author often. So, yeah, we'd like to replace those shelves with, with just regular flat shelves. That will also allow us to expand the size of that collection. As I said in the memo, we are, because the city is expanding so quickly, that's partly because of Town of Madison attachment and partly just because we're, we're growing fast. Our Dane County library standards are going up, so our collection size is going to have to increase. There is some discussion amongst Dane County directors about changing those standards. But as for now, we're going to have to get our collection up significantly by the end of 2023. And this is a really good way to do that. Picture books are the most circulated collection that we have at the library. So it's a, a smart place to add items and this will allow that. And it will let people find things easier and it will be a whole lot easier for our staff to shelf items there as well.
Any questions for Wendy? Doesn't look like it, so we can go right to a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved. Thank you Wendy.
Thank you.
All right, now we can go back to the regular agenda and plan commission, Randy?
A motion to approve resolution R-145-22, which was FP-2454-22 by Brian Twiski, agent for Thermo Fisher Scientific to allow for industrial office research and manufacturing development on the property to the east of Spoke Drive and north of McKee Road.
Second motion.
Signed by Dave and planning commission, do they approve?
Yes, plan, plan approved.
All right, do you want to speak to this?
Sure. The applicant has requested approval of the final plat for Thermo Fisher. And the final plat will allow for the creation of two lots. And as it says in the resolution, the proposed lot is at the corner of Spoke Drive and McKee. And the lots, once they're sold, would be for office, industrial, commercial development. The remaining property, which I believe is to the north, would be, would be retained by Thermo Fisher for future development.
All right. I know we've seen this before and this is just kind of the next step, they have to go through this process a few times. And so we've seen this before. Other further questions on this piece?
Gabriella? I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate that the plan commission acknowledged the tree advisory committee's comments. I thought that was great and that much appreciated.
All right, seeing nothing else, then we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay? That is approved. Anything else on plan commission you want to mention, Randy?
Uh, no, nothing else.
All right, Public Works, I'm not sure who's going to do these items.
I'll take, I'll take it.
All right.
If you can't, if you can't stand my voice, then someone else. I move for approval of R-11022 approving a surcharge document for two 2024 snowplow chassis postponed from the June 14th, 22 meeting.
Second.
Signed by Jay, the Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and are you going to speak to this, Dave?
I, I'll just, we were given, you know, this has been delayed. We were hoping to get the trucks in 2023, it's been delayed to 2024. Manufacturer has indicated to us the possibility of a surcharge, which they've listed and I believe is in the range of 3,000 to 3,600. We weren't sure which it was. We were waiting to hear back from Mark Otto about which, which body we were going to use. It would have given us a better idea, but we did, we did approve it. I don't know if Bill is there. I don't think he's, I don't think he's on tonight.
He is not. Chad can take these too if you'd like. You know, he's, I was happy to explain them if you want as well.
Okay, yeah, why don't you, Chad?
Anything you want to add, Chad?
No, there's nothing more to add on this one. This was just again with the unpredictability of when the delivery would actually occur on this. We were told it could be one to two years for delivery on this particular truck chassis or these two, two truck chassis. And that could obviously equate to a higher price at delivery and they needed us to acknowledge that.
And if we didn't, then they'd pretty much say, well, you might not get your plow or your chassis, so if you want this.
Yeah, we, we don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, kind of have us over the barrel a little. Uh, Jay?
So are, are these replacing existing vehicles or are these adding to the fleet?
Chad, do you, I think one is one of each, right?
I think it is one of each. One is a, a replacement and then one is being added in regards to the town attachment.
Julia?
Yes, are we paying this in advance or we pay a delivery?
Typically, we wouldn't pay for anything until delivery. So I know in certain situations, one of which will be coming up where we put down a small town payment on something, might be the only case where we pay for anything in advance, but this, we wouldn't necessarily pay for anything until it's delivered.
Yeah, we can back out if we don't like the price.
Yeah, that's true. They can go back and say it's a million dollars and we'll say, huh, oh, that's nice, sell to someone else.
I am asking the question because in case that we need to, you know, retain the price, you know what I mean? Like maybe they ask, you want this price on this rate, you need to, you know?
All right, seeing nothing else, we can go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Dave?
Next, I move approval of Resolution R one thirteen twenty-two, authorizing the purchase of an R one two I TSC five GPS system, and this was postponed from the June fourteenth meeting.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And we need two-thirds on this one because of the budget change, and, well, Chad, you wanna speak to this?
Uh, this is updating existing GPS, uh, equipment with newer technology that will hopefully make the job of surveying a bit more, uh, efficient for city staff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add, uh, Public Works had, had deferred, uh, the additional money came from four different accounts, you know, that Bill had specified, and we, we were wondering if those were, if there were gonna be savings in those accounts by the use of this equipment, and he replied back to us, no, they would not be, there's excess money in those, uh, accounts due to something, you know, that isn't going to be spent, so that's why he was, he, those accounts were, uh, specified.
Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, nay? That's approved. Next one?
Move approval, R one twenty-one twenty-two, accepting the twenty-twenty-one compliance maintenance annual report for wastewater collection system.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
All right, Chad, what's this?
Oh, the utilities are required under Wisconsin Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit issued by the DNR to file compliance maintenance annual report annually with the DNR, and the DNR requires that this report be reviewed and adopted by resolution by the governing body, and the, uh, report, uh, is attached via the supporting documents.
Something we have to do every year, it sounds like. All right, any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? That one's approved. Next one?
Uh, move approval Resolution R one twenty-nine twenty-two, proving change order.
No, wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, I moved deferral of, uh, R.
Nope, nope, nope. You skipped number four.
I skipped, oh, number four, I'm sorry. COVID eyes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I move approval of R, R one twenty-eight twenty-two, approving an agreement with R.A. Smith for construction-related services to second addition to Terra Vessa Highfield Reserve, uh, Lacy Ridge Townhomes and the Ochella Drive Extension.
Second.
Sent, sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and Chad, what's this?
So this is an agreement, uh, with a local, uh, consulting firm to take over some, uh, project management and inspection services for the projects listed. This is due to one of the city engineers, uh, taking a three-month leave of absence from July through September, and these were the projects that this engineer would have, uh, generally had oversight over, so in order to keep those projects moving, uh, we needed to, uh, uh, consult out for those, uh, oversight and management duties.
Julia, a question?
Yes, does the city, um, pass through this cost to the developers?
I'll ask that question, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Oh.
It was already brought up?
Yes.
And do they know that they're gonna pay extra for this?
I would hope so, Misty.
You know, Misty?
So the agreement that they have do say that we pass on the cost, so generally, we pass on the hourly billable rate for the employee staff, um, so this rate will be a little bit higher, um, but it's not a new bill that they won't be expecting.
Okay.
I would just add, we've used the resource, I think the primary resource, uh, we're gonna be using is, uh, a former city engineer, Cory Horton, who we, we hold in pretty high regards, so we're confident this will be done professionally and correctly.
All right, any for Julia?
Uh, clarification for the people that are listening. So usually, the developer get a bill from the city, from our quality control inspection, so this one is gonna be a little bit higher because we are outsourcing our, these services to an engineer firm, but, okay.
Yeah, yeah, because of staff numbers, it's gonna be out, yep.
And I believe, uh, I know at least one of the developers has been informed by the, the city engineer that's, uh, going on leave, that, uh, that there'll be, uh, the management services will be done by, by the consulting firm.
Anything further? Oh, Gabriel.
I just wanted to, I, I didn't think about this until now, but we, since we normally bill for our internal staff hours, I assume that there's a reduction in revenue, potentially. Is that, am I wrong? I, is that something that it'll be easy enough to absorb, or is that being thought of in terms of not having a staff on this?
Misty, you wanna answer it?
Yep, uh, so you're right, the revenue will be less than traditional, but we budget for it based on a very conservative amount, so I believe we'll be okay in that area. Uh, this is also the water utility, which has a little more flexibility within the other budget lines.
All right, anything else? Seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? That's approved? All right, next one, Dave?
All right, Finney there. I move approval of R one twenty-eight.
No, I think you wanna postpone.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'd like to, uh, postpone Resolution R one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine twenty-two, proving change order with Enberg Anderson for the contract for services for North Fish Hatchery Road Hub Phase One Final Design.
Second.
Signed by, excuse me, signed by Jay, did Public Works approve? Or what did they do, I guess?
Public Works, uh, Public Works, uh, deferred, uh, till the next meeting. We asked that the, uh, engineer from the firm, we didn't have much information, that we were concerned that the scope of the project had been reduced, uh, so, uh, you know, we wanted to speak to him directly. Bill did provide a document to me, but I haven't had time to go through it, so, um, we're gonna take it up at the next, uh, Board of Public Works meeting.
And Randy, what did Finance do?
I answered approving it. We had some questions, but we did approve it.
All right, Chad?
Uh, in talking with our Public Works Director today about this, uh, they reached out to, uh, the consulting firm based upon the questions posed by the Board of Public Works, and that consulting firm has provided some written response to that, uh, which was shared with, uh, everyone today. Uh, what's complicating, uh, the timing here is, uh, ordinance, uh, four dash thirty-five A and B, uh, which requires, um, the city council, I gotta pull it up here, one second. Yep, four dash thirty-five, uh, A and B, uh, typically requires, uh, the council to allow thirty, a minimum of thirty days to pass before, uh, after an item has been referred, before they act on it. So, uh, since Board of Public Works did not, uh, act on it, uh, they simply deferred it. Uh, their next meeting will be within that thirty-day timeframe. Uh, it's recommended that we wait, uh, until the next, uh, council meeting to act on this, uh, in order to comply with ordinances.
All right, Julia?
Yeah, so my question is, um, does this body have authority over Public Works and decided that, you know, we already got information that Public Works was requesting, um, it was sent to us before the meeting. Um, my other question is, this body already approved that this, the, you know, the construction of this, and my question is, there, if there is any time sensitivity about it will continue postponing, 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 you know what I mean? And then, my, my question is, it's gonna take another two or three months for the designer to bring the final design, and then we need to go to bidding. So my question is, we are gonna be in a timeframe that we're gonna start building this in the spring of twenty-three if we continue delaying stuff? You know what I mean? So I want to be sure that there is no, uh, this delay is not gonna affect, you know, uh, the bidding process, and we are gonna still be under the timeframe that we already ha, we have planned. You know what I mean? So.
So I can't answer that question directly, uh, what the effect might be on this. Uh, what I can say is that this is an amendment or a change order to the contract, uh, so, you know, if there's still work to be completed under the existing contract, the consulting firm can certainly continue on with that work, and they can simply wait until this, uh, this change order is acted upon by the body to, to do that particular portion of, of the, the consulting work that they're doing or design work. And, um, I think that, uh, the, the body would, the council, uh, body would be in, uh, conflict with that ordinance that I've referenced, four dash thirty-five, uh, B in particular, uh, which, which requires the thirty days, uh, from a time an item's been referred to a committee, uh, to pass before the council basically acts on it, um, because there was no action or, uh, so forth from the committee. So that's, uh, staff recommendation is to wait. Uh, we are certainly, uh, you know, cognizant of, of keeping things on schedule, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that this, uh, this timeline won't necessarily cause any significant delays, uh, in particular, since we are now obviously planning for a, a spring of twenty-three construction.
Gabrielle, and then I'll come back, that's me.
I'm sorry, I was writing a note, and I, and I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, I, I was writing, and I, I think I misheard. Do, do we just clarify that Finance did pass this because we had some additional information? Do we clarify that? Okay, sorry, I just missed it. I misheard. That's one check.
Julia, go ahead.
Now, my final comment about this is that, is, um, if we continue delaying project and thing, cost is gonna increase, so, um, and this is my main concern, you know what I mean? And, and that's it, you, you know? I don't know why, it was an easy question in public work, I watched the meeting, um, and Bill was there, and he should have known about the answer about this. It's, it's in the, it's very easy to understand in the resolution why it was a change of order, and it was all the changes were there, and I don't know why they would defer for thirty-eight thousand dollar or forty thousand dollar. So this is my concern is, we need to be cautious that if we continue delaying stuff, you know, with everything is going right now in our economy, inflation, everything is gonna come back later, more expensive, so. I want to be sure that there is no, it's not time sensitive, this delay, you know what I mean, like?
Dave, go ahead.
Um, Julia, I, I appreciate your, your concern about that. I, I share it too, but please know that, you know, change orders, we, we feel, as Board of Public Works, you know, very, due diligence needs to be taken on those, you know, that contractors find out, well, you know, Pittsburgh just rubber stamps, you know, whatever change order we send them, uh, that word gets around, you know, MG&E tried to get us on Lacy Road many years ago, a few years ago, and, and so, you know, we, we gotta spend another two weeks to, to read it over and understand it. Well, I, that's, that's what, you know, the board was, was comfortable to leave. I wanna speak for Alder Wheeler, but, uh, I think that's what we felt.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, I believe the ayes have it, with a couple of nays on there. All right, so that is postponed. Uh, next one, Dave? You got lots to date.
Just to clarify, sorry to interrupt, just to clarify, that was Maldonado voting no, and Aratafroda voting no, correct?
I believe those are the only two we had, yes.
Thank you.
Next, I'll move, I'll move approval Resolution R one thirty twenty-two, proving agreement and assignment of agreement for subdivision improvements in the Pain and Dolan CSM six-one four-five McKee Road.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
All right, Chad, you wanna speak to this one?
Yeah, this is, uh, related to the, um, General Beverage Pain and Dolan, um, um, land sale and the subsequent subdivision improvement agreements that are required to move forward, now they're dividing that parcel into two lots. Uh, Lot one will remain with Pain and Dolan and continue operating, uh, as their asphalt plant, and Lot two will be, uh, sold to General Beverage, uh, to allow them to construct a warehouse, uh, some additional warehouse space on, on Cottonwood, and then this is obviously the subdivision improvement agreement related to that.
Any questions?
I think I just wanted to point out that this was referred to Trade Advisory, and it was seen on June sixteenth. I think it just wasn't, didn't make it into the agenda as the list.
Did they approve it?
Yeah, we approved it.
True, okay. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay? That one's approved, and one more, Dave?
Okay, uh, I move approval Resolution R one thirty-four twenty-two, proving the collateral agreement of agreement for subdivision improvements in the second addition to plot of Terra Vessa.
Second.
Signed by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, and Chad?
Yeah, so this one is, uh, looking to assign, uh, the SIA, uh, to the bank that's financing this, I guess, kind of co-signing or co-assigning it. That way, they have both the, the rights and the responsibilities of the developer in case of a developer default. Uh, additional information is in the referral sheet, but that's kind of the high-level overview of this one.
Pretty common, I think, on these projects.
Yes, we have done this previously.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay? All right, that is lost stuff for Public Works. All right, uh, Park Commission, we did the resolution. Anything you wanna add, Julia? All right, Library Board, we did the resolution, anything you wanna add?
Yeah, we, um, the, the library has been, uh, holding some, uh, outreach events, uh, most notably the, uh, library in the park, which is happening on Wednesdays from two until three, uh, in the Town of Madison, and they've been getting some pretty good participation there, uh, and, uh, um, it looks like it's, it's turning out to be a good, um, a good vent, uh, event to help, uh, acquaint people with the city of Pittsburgh.
All right, thank you. Commission on Asian Well, I don't know, Dave, if you have anything, you know, you're a little under the weather, and it looks like.
I got a couple, I got a couple things, I'll be quick. Uh, we had a travel show, you know, we had forty attending, ten took the, we had a tour to Holland, Michigan, Tulip Tour, I guess they call it, uh, um, we had twenty people, we have twenty people signed up for the fall Southwest National Park tours. Uh, the Senior Center friends paid, paid for the hotel for one of our, one of our clients, you know, that, that had gotten, uh, you know, out of his house, and he had to go in the hotel. Uh, we get funding from the county, but the, the friends of the, uh, Senior Center, they pay that initially, and then they get reimbursed, so they kind of float that. So it's a, it's a very, uh, it's very advantageous to have that group. Uh, our Friends newsletter has been updated, I, I think you can find that, that brochure, it's in the, it's in the front, and, uh, we're requesting our yearly funding for case management and nutrition, and that typically, you know, that request that we're funding that we need, seventy percent of it comes from, uh, the county and, uh, thirty percent from the city, and Jill, one last thing, Jill added that our, our attendance is close to getting back up to, you know, pre-COVID, COVID levels, so we're excited to, excited to hear that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is RCC?
No report.
All right, what about TTC?
No report.
All right, SITA?
SITA, we met last week, Thursday the twenty-third at, uh, seven AM, uh, a number of items were discussed, um, uh, let me see, Brian Munson, Principal Design, Designer, Neighborhood Designer with, Project Facilitator with Mandawal, was, uh, in for an update on Fady Fields, Nine Springs, which is Royal Capital Developer, and then Harton Property. Um, excuse me. And then, uh, Mike Z gave an update, uh, yesterday was, was Pittsburgh's Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, Ribbon Cutting took place last week for nurture for aesthetics, uh, Ribbon Cutting for Discovery Storage is coming up this Thursday, the twenty-ninth. Uh, the original Organic Potter Cracker will be relocating to Pittsburgh. Their new home will be, uh, at the Carthage Building behind the Quick Trip on McKee. Uh, Wheel and Sprocket is acquiring Pittsburgh Cycles. Uh, Plan Commission approved a new surgery center, which will be on the first floor of Benjamin, uh, the Benjamin Building, and then the final plat approved by the Plan Commission, um, I'm sorry, that's a, a note, I should move on. Venture Capital proposing a new one-hundred-and-seventy-unit apartment complex on the north end of, fit the Fish Hatchery Corridor, which is between Avalon and Index Road, that development will take place. Um, and then there's monthly events between now and September for the Town of Madison. Uh, the events are designed for residents to ask questions of staff, allowing for that smooth transition. And a couple more things from Mike Z. Pittsburgh is sponsoring the Festival of Speed, maybe that was mentioned earlier, it's July ninth, and then, uh, the Latino Chamber of Commerce. 9th, and then the Latino Chamber of Commerce has, Latino Chamber has closed on the former roughy-hit style building. And Dan Hardy, he spoke on venture debt, the venture debt program. There's some things going on with Platypus and stock, a stock buyback, that'll all be resolved within 30 days or cared for. Joyce gave a brief update on the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, which met in June, and Jack Pearson was there and he walked through some of the existing conditions that are out in the city and gave an overview of the multifamily housing as, as we look to develop programs to finance and improve the upgrades. Mark Hamilton announced that Saturday, July 16th, will be the 20th annual move for the Boys and Girls Club, Ride, 5K Run and Walk, and then the dollars raised will go to the McKenzie Workforce Center. And then Mark also spoke to the e-bike phase, phase one has been rolled out, phase two, they're working on securing the TAP grant funding, so that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, and what about Ag and Rural Affairs?
We were, we were supposed to meet last Tuesday, but that was canceled.
All right, EMS?
Nothing to report, I was actually out sick, so I was not in attendance for that.
All right, what about Bike Meeting?
Yeah, we have, we're going to convene a special meeting to plan for the bicycle gold status, so we're going to be meeting on July 5th at noon, noon to 12:30.
All right, what about, thank you, Tree Advisory?
Okay, we met on June 16th. We, we discussed, you know, the Terrace Garden was in the agenda, so we discussed a lot about that and then we, they are still working with the tree protection ordinance, it's almost done. I think the final language is going to be sent to Valeri to review and the idea is that there is final tree protection ordinance, it will, the idea is to be back to us by the end of the year for approval, so, but it's almost done. So the other thing that we, it was interesting, there was, I don't know if you are aware about the Dolly Conservancy Management Plan of the area, there is a Seminole Highway on the, on the east side, so that belongs to the city of Pittsburgh and there was, there is a neighbor, a resident from that area, Sam DiMaggio, that he has been working on that area, clearing the embasing shrub and also planting some native vegetation and I have noticed that because I saw for the first time, I saw a sign there and I didn't know, I thought it was, that belonged to Dane County, but no, it belonged to the city and this neighbor is starting during COVID, start clear, clearing out that area. So, so we work about, we talk about this and we decided that we want to, to have a future condition and management goal for the Dolly Conservancy and then Anna will be put together a management plan for the area because there are a lot of neighbors that they want to contribute and maybe continue with the clearance, they are doing, not during summertime, they're going to wait until the fall. So, but this is great because, you know, they are neighbors cleaning that area and I didn't know, I was, I was surprised to see that belongs to that Conservancy, so what else? And that's it.
All right, thank you. Fire and Parks Preservation?
We have not met.
All right, Housing Advisory?
We have not met, no updates since the last meeting.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
We're still sitting on our hands.
All right, moving on to Finance, we did A already, next one, Randy?
All right. Motion to approve resolution R-13122 to authorizing the approval of the Microsoft Enterprise License Agreement renewal.
Second.
Sent by Jade, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, the city of Pittsburgh is, obtained its Microsoft licensing through the enterprise license agreement under the state contract. The agreement covers July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, and the resolution is to authorize the approval of three-year agreement and the dollars are listed as well in the packet. And we do pay the, pay the fee yearly, so, but it is a three-year contract.
All right, any questions?
Misty, maybe, maybe Misty would like to add something.
Misty, do you want to add anything?
Only thing I'd add is that we are ingrained in Microsoft, so our hands are relatively tied, we, we need the software to function.
All right, sounds good. Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay. That's one, that's approved, next one?
All right, the next one, motion to approve resolution R-13622 approving of the OnBase Agenda Enhancement Project.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, and what's this one about?
Misty, since you're on, would you like to speak to it?
Sure, so this is the first project that's coming forward to be used by that tid closure excess increment, so we approved the adopted investment plan, we approved a 2022 budget amendment, and now we're doing the purchasing for our first project out of there. So OnBase is the software we use for the minutes, for the agendas, for the packets, all of that. There's a new enhancement available that will pretty significantly improve and streamline our internal processes as far as all of the things we do with Agenda, so we'd like to move forward with that. We think at some point they'll probably force us to go to this new enhanced version, but we want to, you know, we have, because we have the money and because we have a pretty significant benefit of implementing it now, but we thought we'd bring it forward as part of that plan.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, say nay. That one's approved, anything else on Finance, Randy?
No, nothing, thank you.
All right, Personnel?
No report.
All right, Public Safety, anything you want to add, Dave?
Jade, do you want to add anything? Lot of activity.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on in the parks over the next month or so, so, but many of them are private events, not really open to the public, so, but if you see stuff happening, it's just people using the parks.
The Boys and Girls Club has that big event.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and the Festival of Speed also, so, a couple of Pittsburgh things, but a lot of this stuff as well. All right, then we can keep moving along. Mayor's Report, two items, first one is just a reminder that our next meeting is canceled, we always kind of cancel one in the summer and that works well because a lot of staff are gone over the fourth when they'd have to be preparing for that meeting, so we will not see you in a couple of weeks, we'll see you in about a month. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is, you know, as we're starting to prepare for the, I mean, we're working on CIP right now, but we're actually preparing for the operating budget right now, and one of the things, just, you know, knowing some of the handcuffs that we have, and I talked about it in the CIP, we are trying to provide a little more guidance for staff this year, and one of those is, you know, if staff wants to ask for new positions, I'm asking that they identify their top priority and then if they have a second one, they can identify that, but the reality is, is that those are the only two kind of options, or we don't want, I'm not accepting more than two at this point in time now. Those are things that actually affect the operating budget, for instance, the water utility, a new position there does not affect the operating budget, so, you know, that's something where it would be a little bit different. And the other thing is that, you know, talking with Chad, we are working on, of like a five-year staffing plan as well, and so that's something that he is taking on because it is important and we do want to make sure we have some planning out there. The budget's not really the right place to do that long-term staffing, staff planning, so, but we are working on that as an option, but, you know, if we only are able to add two or three positions, the reality is, is that if we can have three positions, all three are not going to be from the same department, so tell us what those two top ones might be, and really it's anything that's adding new money to the budget, so, and it's, you know, whether it's a half percent, half a position or full position, that counts as one, so you can't add a half here and a half there and say, oh, that's one position, no, that, that's two positions, that's two people, and so, you know, just trying to really, you know, figure out, it's going to be a challenge adding staff period, hopefully we can get a good adjustment from the town of Madison, we talked about that last week, but trying to provide some more guidance for staff, so they also don't spend a lot of time on four or five positions that aren't going to happen anyway, so why spend that time as a staff? So, that's the, just the two main things I have right now, as well as go to all the events coming up, and this is even month, second meeting, so District Four would be first. Jim?
Nothing to report.
All right, Randy?
Just one item, and Chad Brecklin stole the thunder, but the Pittsburgh Senior Center Friends brought us my attention, so I think it's worth mentioning again, the Brock Lunch on Thursday, July 14, 20 of this, of this coming month at 11:30 to 1:00 PM, has a drive-through dine-in, so, senior, senior center costs $5, so bring a friend, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Joe?
Today I attended the unveiling or ribbon cutting for solar panels that were installed at the Boys and Girls Club Allied location. I think one of the vice presidents gave a stats, they were installed in November and since November, they did a energy audit and determined they would offset the carbon for 1,000 trees per year by having solar, so Legacy Solar installed them and there was also an advocacy organization that I can't remember that gave a stat about, basically saying that they help contribute to 1% of Wisconsin's energy grid by, by like being able to help businesses and residencies and nonprofits install solar, so it was a pretty cool demonstration and glad to be a part of that. There was a restorative justice summit held at the Boys and Girls Club as well, it was very successful, it brought in about 100 adults and youth throughout the state and we had some really powerful breakout presenters and just, we had somebody to start the day to sort of ground us in the neighborhood that we were in, which gave me a little sense of pride, so, you know, thank you for the folks that put that on as well, that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Dave?
Last Friday, the LA Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association, we had a successful community meal in the park next to LA, LA Drive, Elder Maldonado also attended, it was a very, very nice event, and just one thing, Administrator Brecklin, could you have Mike Zimmerman call me tomorrow? I have a resident, it was kind of an odd question, she, she was starting a business or something called Bounce Back and she was looking for, and he had some reference or endorsement from the city, and I said, I, I've got a, I, I'm not the right guy here, so could you have Mike get ahold of me tomorrow, I'll give the, give him the woman's name and try to fill him in, it was, it was a little, little hard for me to understand what she was looking for, that's all, thank you.
All right, I'm going to take my liberty, August 20th, 1 to 9:00 PM, Luna's Block Party, so I encourage the council and the staff and everybody to join us, it's going to be a blast. 2010 Red Arrow Trail in Madison.
All right, Julia?
Okay, so today, District Two, Alder, we wake up very early in the morning, so we have NBC 15 did an interview, Gabriella and Jake Johnson participate in the interview about the inclusive program, was great, everything is online, maybe I can send you the post, so there's more publicity for the inclusive program. I told you last time, so thank you Gabriella for waking up at 5:00 in the morning. I did it last week with Channel 3000, it was, I think, also 5:30. So July 24 is going to be the ribbon cutting for the inclusive program, so everyone is invited, they said the date is coming soon. The other thing I want to, I, I went to the Southdale Park at, activity, what, it was last week, I think so? I was impressed that, I want to thank Lisa and Jeremy and Scott and all the team, the fire department and police department that were there, more than 100 people show up and, and I think they are, you know, I think the, the, one of the comments that you're talking to the, the people there are that they feel that they have been neglected for many, many years, so being there as a city, I think, is a good thing because maybe they are seeing that at least someone is going to care about us and our community, so there is a lot of Latino-speaking people, so I was able to, you know, to, to speak in Spanish with some of the neighbors, but it was great, so I will invite you guys to, there is another event on July, I don't remember the date, Chad, July and August?
Yeah, there'll be one, I think July, August and September, and I can get the dates out.
Yeah, it will be, I, I recommend that you go at least for, you know, half an hour and chat with the neighbors, so. The other thing is I receive a lot of calls from some of my neighbor close to my house about the brown water, okay, so I know that we were fixing one of the well, but I don't know if the city did an outreach to the neighbor and say, by the way, there's going to be a decoloration of your water. So I think some of them, they called the city, but they were not sure and they reached out to me and I said, yes, the city is fixing one of the wells, so, but, you know, so I don't know, I think my, my recommendation will be if next time, I think we need to, I don't know, we posted in Facebook, we send an email or flash email, you know, about this decoloration of the water.
I, I'm not from, I, I was gone last week, so I don't know when that may have happened. If you want to send the date to me, or if you have it now, whatever day that happened, I can certainly confirm with Public Works whether or not there was some, some work going on.
I think it's going to be for two weeks, something like that, I know.
Okay.
An email wins.
Huh?
An email won out.
Yeah, I've seen things on Facebook.
Well, I want to tell you, a lot of people didn't get it, so.
And I know there's been things on Facebook, on social media, but again, it's hard to catch everyone.
Yeah, I know, but I want to make sure that, that one was, you know, I, I don't know. So what else? That's it, I have been meeting with a lot of the neighbors, you know, but everyone is asking what is happening in McKefon Park, you know, with the big construction and so they're happy that it's, it's not like a, a tall building, so, so that's it.
All right, Gabriella?
May I go last? Is that?
All right, yeah, sure. Jade?
Yeah, the, the, in the town of Madison, the Fun in the Park dates are July 28th, August 25th and September 22nd, so those are still coming up. The library is still having their pop-ups though from 2 until 3 every Wednesday and there's been some good, good input from that and other than that, I think a lot of my neighbors are really starting to dread the Sine Road reconstruction project.
At least they have Quick Trip going up to.
To offset that.
Shannon?
I have nothing to add.
All right, and Gabriella?
Thanks. I just, I have somewhat heavy, heavy statement to make, so I, I just wanted to jump right into it, so as you probably all know, the Dobbs versus Jackson Women's Health ruling from the Supreme Court was handed down on Friday, which overturns Roe v. Wade in case he be, be Planned Parenthood, and that means that Wisconsin, the criminal abortion ban from 1849 is now potentially enforceable, and that means that abortion is illegal in the state of Wisconsin, and because we live in a gerrymandered state where the legislature does not represent the will of the people, that law is not likely to change anytime soon, even though the majority of Wisconsinites believe in access to abortion. And I, I can't let this moment go by without telling you how devastated I am, how heartbroken I am, and how furious I am about this, this happening. Abortion is healthcare and nobody should restrict access to needed healthcare and certainly not the state. Women are going to die because of this and, you know, I myself could die. People don't always think about the, the fact that pregnancy can turn on a dime, people can go from being perfectly healthy to bleeding out or dying of sepsis very quickly. And. And you don't always have the option to fly to another state. And I think about the fact that when you talk about exceptions for life or health of the mother, what is the percentage of death that had that I have to justify in order to decide to live? Is it a thirty percent chance of dying? Is it a fifty fifty? Do I have to have my blood pressure dropping and and slowly slipping away before I'm entitled to to choose to save my life by accessing a health procedure? I, you know, I have to be governed by a law that was passed seventy years before I even had the right to vote as a woman. And, you know, and that's just one scenario. I I hope you all know this, but if you don't, I mean, there's ectopic pregnancies, women carrying fetuses that will die immediately upon birth, all the way to term, women whose pregnancies are are risky, dying and leaving their children orphaned, families falling deeper into poverty, women tied to their domestic abusers or their rapists for life. And the people that will be most affected are those that already struggle financially or live in poverty and especially women of color, especially black women, who have far, far higher rates of maternal mortality. And women that have natural miscarriages are are gonna go to prison, and that already happens in this country. And for anyone that says that this is this is alarmist, um, you know, please look up Savita in Ireland, Olga in Nicaragua, Isabella in Poland, Manuela in El Salvador and read about their stories and think about how many how many names of American women are gonna be added to that list in the coming years and the coming decades. Abortion is healthcare. Healthcare decisions are complex and the only people that should be involved in those decisions are the person that's pregnant and their doctor. It's a private decision. It is nobody's business but but business but your own. And if we can't access abortion, if we can't choose whether and when to have children, we do not have bodily autonomy and we are not equal citizens of this country. One of the greatest honors of my life was being elected to this office. And I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. And as of last Friday, I am told that those constitutions do not grant me bodily autonomy, do not allow me to make choices about my body and possibly even the decision to not die. And I do not accept that. So, uh, to everyone in Pittsburgh that's in pain because of this news, because of this new reality that we live in, uh, I am with you. Please, please use me as a resource if you don't know where to turn for information. I am anguished, I am angry, but I am determined to fight to restore the right to abortion and the right to bodily autonomy. And I invite all that are willing to join me in that fight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going on to unfinished business, uh, would someone like to do a resolution or do a motion, I should say, for this one?
I would move approval of Resolution R one twenty seven dash twenty two, allowing members of the common council and other bodies to appear telephonically and or via the internet until December thirty one, two thousand twenty two.
Second.
Sent by Jim, and I can speak to this. So we've done this for ever since COVID, actually. And, you know, lately we've just been kind of renewed for every three months. It was due to expire at the end of June and it's something that, like we've said this before, we'll always have Zoom available for staff, for residents, for business people at some point in time. And I think even Madison and other municipalities are starting to say, okay, if you're actually a member of the body to vote, you have to be in person. And so, um, I don't know if that's the time right now for us or not. This is going six months because of Valley's going on maternity leave. And so that's why it's six months, about three months at this point in time. We don't have to pass this, we can just let it expire. But I wanted to at least give the option for council to to make that choice instead of just letting it expire. So I don't know what people want to do, but I just wanted to bring forward. Comments or questions?
Well, I think we ought to extend this and I think we ought to, uh, I I I actually may prepare for a future meeting, a resolution to send to the state legislature to change the statute to allow this to happen permanently. I, there are things the legislature has done that have been a little crazy, especially in regard to our Assembly Representative Jimmy Anderson and that they refuse to accommodate his disability in in the assembly chambers. And I think something needs, something needs to change in the state statutes to, um, to accommodate certain things like this. And there's no reason, there's no reason why we have to be physically present in the same place. It's two thousand twenty two, not nineteen oh eight. So that would be my view.
Another outdated antiquated.
I agree with everything Jay said.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is approved. Next up, uh, looks like this is a Public Works one, more for you, Dave. Unless you'd rather have finance do it.
I'll move approval of Resolution R one hundred twenty two, approving state municipal agreement to fund the South Sine and McCoy Road intersection improvements.
Second.
Sent by Jade, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance, Finance approved.
All right, Chad, do you want to take these for Dave?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. This is, uh, in regards to improvements at Sine and McCoy Road intersection. Uh, this is, I think, slated for a two thousand twenty four project, but, uh, we were actually awarded some grant funding that, uh, will help cover the design cost for this particular project and, uh, other information is listed here. The city is ultimately responsible for one hundred percent of the design costs as well as a ten percent match and any additional cost beyond the the cap state funding. But again, there is, uh, uh, some grant funding that's coming in on this one.
Any questions on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Dave?
Move approval of Resolution R one oh two twenty two, amending the county highway MM and Lacy Road traffic signal budget.
Second.
Sent by Jade, did Public Works approve?
I believe Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, Chad, what's this?
So these signals are already in and, uh, as the engineering department was updating the costs associated with this project and, uh, billing them out, uh, some additional funding was, uh, I'm sorry, there was a shortfall identified in the overall project budget. So we need to move some money, uh, if I recall correctly, in order to cover that. And, uh, Misty, if there's additional information on this one that I've either provided incorrectly or you need to further clarify, let me know. Uh, and ultimately, this requires a two thirds vote by council.
Anything you want to add, Misty?
Uh, yep, the shift in the funding sources is what caused this and the the budget amendment, the shortfall in the cities portion, we had some borrowed money for the McKee Road project that is available that we will shift over to this other project, which is also a road project, so eligible for the use of those borrowed funds.
All right, any questions or comments? See, oh, Julia, go ahead.
Yes, a question for Misty. Um, so, um, how much money are left in the McKee Road Phase Two fund?
I will have to look that up.
Okay, it's, okay. You know, so don't worry.
All right, anything else? All right, then we can go to vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one?
Move approval of Resolution R one twenty six twenty two, authorizing acceptance of two thousand twenty two South Sine Road reconstruction bid.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, Chad, what's this?
This is for the first phase of the South Sine Road reconstruction. Actually, I guess it's second phase since we did one last year. Uh, this covers Aurora Avenue, which is just to the south of Lacy Road, uh, all the way north to, uh, approximately Nanny Berry Park near Oak, uh, No Oaks Ridge, uh, north of the new QuickTrip in the intersection of East Cheryl and, um, and South Sine. The bids did come in, uh, about ten percent over the engineer's estimate. Considering the climate that we're in, uh, we feel ten percent is actually a reasonable, uh, overage, to be honest with you. We are hearing of, uh, other projects coming in thirty, forty and even fifty percent overbid. And we've even had, uh, I think our interceptor project recently came in at a hundred and ten percent over the engineer's estimates. So, uh, this one, uh, is generally reasonable, uh, from what we can tell. And, uh, this one also requires a two thirds vote.
All right, any?
It's ten percent is six hundred thousand, just so everyone knows, we're spending a lot more on this. You know, I think it's beyond our control, but, you know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
All right, Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, there's just two things on this. We've had a, um, there's a couple of residents who live on this stretch of road who have been unhappy with the sidewalk, uh, that's going in front of their houses. And, uh, Public Works has worked out the sidewalk issue with them. Uh, there's still gonna be a sidewalk and they're still gonna have to maintain it, but it's gonna be on, uh, city property. And, uh, so hopefully, uh, we won't have, uh, any more issues with that. But, uh, Public Works staff did spend some time working with the residents to resolve that, so that's why they're not here tonight.
Excellent.
For Misty, uh, Misty, can you explain how we're gonna pay this different? Because there's, yeah, I think your sum is gonna be covered by Tid thirteen. Which one is that one? Is the the new promega?
Nope, so Tid thirteen is the one that includes Phoenix. There's overlay with Tid fourteen, so that Lacy, Sine.
Okay, okay, okay.
And up that way, uptown area is that one.
But so the increase is gonna be covered by one of those Tid? We're gonna put this in the.
I want to understand.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, one point eight million of it is gonna be paid for by Tid. Uh, there was five hundred thousand, I believe, budgeted to be paid for by the Tid. So that was quite a bit of an increase there. For that piece, uh, we will, uh, redirect some money that we borrowed for Tid nine and we'll use it for a Tid thirteen project instead. Tid thirteen, of course, will then pay that borrowed money back. Um, but so that part is taken care of. And then there's an additional amount for sanitary sewer that will be paid for with unspent funding in Verona Road. And then there's a seventy five thousand in the stormwater fund, which will be paid for by that Floran Lyman project that's no longer being pursued for two thousand twenty two. I believe we talked about that at the C I P time. I think those were the only amounts. Yep.
Jay? Yeah, the other thing I wanted to ask about this is, um, it seems like we're seeing more and more and more of these projects where the cost is coming in above the engineer's estimate. And I I totally get why that's happening, but it seems like maybe our engineering department needs to adjust its way of doing estimates to be more in line with what the market actually is. And I don't know how easy that is to do, and I I don't want this to sound like a criticism. It just seems like something needs to be updated to to accommodate the conditions we're in right now.
I think typically most projects of this size and scope, actually, those engineer estimates are provided by consultants and not, uh, not our staff.
Oh, well, then maybe we need different consultants.
All right, any further questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay? That one's approved. Next one, Dave?
I move approval of Resolution R one thirty eight, one thirty nine twenty two, approving purchase of two thousand twenty three Ford F one fifty Lightning utility truck.
Second.
Sent by Gabriela, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And Chad, what's this one?
So I can, uh, cover both, uh, this item and the next item with one summary. Uh, both the Public Works Department and the Utility Department, uh, have trucks that need to be replaced. Uh, they have evaluated the Ford F one fifty electric, uh, truck that is available recently. Uh, we've done a direct referral because of, uh, the bid is anticipated, uh, the bid opening window is, uh, anticipated in early to mid-July. Uh, it's not anticipated that that, uh, window will be open very long. And, uh, the the Public Works and Utility Department would like to be able to have authorization to, uh, request, uh, two of these trucks when when available. Uh, they have covered the cost, uh, in addition to what a a normal gas powered, uh, truck would be through amendments, uh, to their budgets, uh, through accounts that, uh, are going to be under underutilized or otherwise repurposed.
I believe the last time that they had something like this, it was open for a day. So you had to get our order in that day. So that's why they want to have the authorization to put it in. As soon as we get the word, it's July fourteenth, so we can actually submit it that day.
What time does it start?
Misty will be up early getting ready. No, she's never up early. If it's at midnight, maybe she'll be up still, but she won't be up early. Uh, Gabriela?
Yeah, I'm I'm delighted by this and I really acknowledge the department for taking a a jump and going with the electric vehicle. I think this Ford pickup is is pretty transformational because it it just hits a market that has not been done by electric vehicles. So and I I really thanks to the department heads also for finding the money in their budgets, um, so that other departments that might not have that flexibility can use the hyper electric vehicle fund. So I'm I'm thrilled to see this and I, you know, I'll cross my fingers, uh, that that we we get this, uh, ordered and coming in the near future. Thanks.
I also asked, uh, Bill Balky if additional charging infrastructure will be necessary, obviously, if we're successful in ordering these. And of course, it would be. Uh, we're anticipating that cost to be between, uh, twenty five hundred and five thousand dollars, uh, depending upon, um, the type of charger. Of course, we could spend significantly more and get higher, uh, capacity chargers that charge much more quickly. But, uh, Bill is estimating that they'll have some, uh, project savings in other areas where they should be able to cover the cost of the charging infrastructure if we're successful in in, uh, ordering these trucks.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, say nay? That one's approved. Next one, Dave?
Move approval of R one forty twenty two, approving purchase of two thousand twenty two Ford electric truck.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And it sounds like kind of saying things last one, we might have a day to get this in, so we want to be able to do it. All right, anything further? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? That one's approved? Another one, Dave?
Uh, move approval of R one forty one twenty two, approving purchase of two thousand twenty two Chevrolet work truck.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
I think we did.
All right, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, Chad, what's this one?
So the Streets Department has budgeted funds in two thousand twenty one, actually, to replace the two thousand and eight, uh, work truck. Uh, they have been unable to order any trucks through the Wisconsin State Contract System the last couple of years, and then they've been periodically checking inventory of dealers to see if they, uh, can locate a pickup truck that would be suitable for their needs. Uh, they have been fortunate to locate, uh, a current truck in Evansville at a Chevy dealer there. Uh, that dealer has agreed to hold the truck for a short period of time, uh, with a one thousand dollar, uh, down payment. Uh, it is refundable, that one thousand dollars, if, uh, this request ultimately is not approved by council or if the, uh, dealer is ultimately unable to to deliver the truck. But the, uh, pricing, uh, has been, uh, also discounted by the by Chevrolet to bring the total down to, uh, just under thirty five thousand. And the equipment replacement fund at the Public Works Department is sufficient to handle this purchase.
Any, Jay?
Zoom, this truck, uh, probably is gonna need to have like the yellow lights on it or is that additional equipment included in this price or will that be another another line item?
Uh, I don't believe that that's included in this particular price. I was able to review the, um, the quote and there was nothing specifically in the quote for, uh, for that equipment. So they'll probably, they typically would add a radio and, as you mentioned, some yellow, uh, warning lights and usually some, uh, measure of a decal or two, uh, to the truck. So those will all be some additional cost. Typically, I would guess that that would be probably less than five thousand dollars in most situations for a public works vehicle, uh, or truck. But, uh, I can't say for certain what that'll come in at.
I think they reuse what they can.
Peel those decals off.
Put a glue stick on the back and back on. Put a little glue stick on the back, back on. All right, not seeing anything else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone oppose, say nay? All right, that's approved. One more, Dave.
Hey, move approval of Resolution R one forty-two twenty-two, approving revised agreement for deferred public improvements in Lot Two of CSM seven-seven-hundred.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
And Chad, what's this?
So this is also related to the, uh, Payne and Dolan, uh, General Beverage, uh, project. What this does is, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Lot One will be retained, uh, by Payne and Dolan for their use, uh, of the existing asphalt plant, and this agreement, uh, allows deferred public improvements uh, on Lot One until certain conditions would be met. And, uh, that information, I believe, should be included in the supporting documents as to what would trigger those improvements to be done.
Any questions? Gabriel?
I'm, I just have never, I don't recall seeing something. Is this a typical thing that we do? I, I just, maybe it just isn't sparking a memory.
Uh, we do it.
Differing improvements?
Yeah, I mean, or it's like, it's not super common, but we do it when we negotiate with it. Okay.
We, we look at things on a case-by-case basis, and we're in a situation like this where it makes sense to, to defer those improvements. I mean, uh, they're operating an asphalt plant at this point, and there's no immediate plans for them to cease that operation, so.
Great, thanks.
And, and if you, um, if you have an opportunity to kind of look it through that, if, and maybe you have already, uh, there are a number of items in there that would trigger the public improvements to have to be done.
Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? That one's approved. Finance, Randy?
Uh, motion to approve Resolution R dash one four three dash two-two, authorize an additional purchase of water meters and radios.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella, did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
And do you want to speak to this, or have someone else?
Sure, the, uh, the utility has, uh, used its lot for residential meters and radio purchases, and is requesting authority to purchase additional meters and radios, uh, just to keep up with the demand. The shortage is of radios since two thousand twenty-one. Due to supply issues, we also expect an increase in the price of the meter and radios.
Yep, we're building a lot, and so we need a lot of meters. People don't like it if they can't live, move in their house because there's not a water meter available.
Exactly.
Any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? That's approved. Randy?
Motion to approve Resolution R.
I'm sorry, could you actually, uh, postpone this one?
Yes, motion to postpone Resolution R dash one four six dash two-two.
Second.
All right, sent by Gabriella. What did Finance do?
We did postpone till the next council meeting in July, wherever, July twenty-sixth.
Yep, yeah, so the reason we're postponing is that, uh, Dane County asked us to, uh, assign an amendment, and we were looking for the original agreement, and we have been able, unable to find, uh, an original agreement that was signed by all parties. So, we, uh, we can still approve this in July and not have any problems with timing. We may need to approve the original amendment or original agreement, as well as the amendment at that point in time.
Does Dane County have a copy of it?
Not that they've found yet.
So, our, uh, super sleuth, uh, Misty Dodge has located the original resolution, uh, with the contract. It does not have all of the signatures on it. Uh, it has, I think, five out of six, so we're checking with the county to see if they can come up with the, the original that, uh, would have that remaining, uh, signature from a county official at the time. So, uh, that's why this was ultimately postponed, because, uh, we were wanting to make sure that we were comfortable with what the contract had said, and then obviously, we could move forward. So, you'll see this again now, uh, on the twenty-sixth of July, now that we've found at least a contract you can take a look at.
All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose, say nay? All right, that's postponed.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I, I was gonna mention something under R one hundred dash twenty-two, but I, it slipped my mind at the time, which was the first item in that list, so that was the Sine Road and McCoy Road intersection. So, um, rolling back through the annals of history, um, Highway fourteen didn't used to be where it is now. Highway fourteen used to be Highway MM. And if you go back even farther, Park Street used to connect to Sine Road. And if you look at a map, you see, you will see they line up perfectly. But as, uh, when I, when I first visited Madison as a kid, Highway twelve was a four-lane, um, undivided highway. It was just four lanes, and an example of what's left of that is Broadway over by Southtown, uh, Mall. That's what Highway fourteen used to look like, all, uh, that's what the Beltline used to look like. So none of the Beltline infrastructure used to be there. So Sine Road used to be a straight road that connected to, uh, Park Street. And McCoy Road came in at a T-intersection to, uh, Sine Road. So at some point after, after that, after high, after the Beltline was built, Highway twelve was built, and then eventually Highway fourteen was built, they discovered that there was no traffic coming from the northern part of Sine Road, so that piece was cut off. And if you go down there, if you go to that intersection where Gervasi's is, you can see where there's no trees. There's this big grassy area, there's no trees, but there's trees over to the other side, because that road used to go straight through. So in our, in our daily, in our almost weekly lesson of how, how things, uh, the, the more they change, the more they stay the same, this road alignment that we approved tonight is now going to go back to the way it was sixty years ago.
All right, so like I mentioned earlier, next council meeting is about a month, as long as it can be the whole. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By Jay, sent by Joe, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Anyone oppose, say nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.